Hey, we are now live on Zoom.
Excellent. Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the classic school committee Wednesday, December 20th, 2023. We're in person here as a learning commons. We are virtual on Zoom. We are not virtual on Facebook, which is because Facebook, the app is down. So if you're watching on Facebook, you actually can't be doing that. So this message is for you. But if you're trying to watch on Facebook, then you can't, you know, there's message anyway, but just so everyone knows for the record, Facebook is not cooperating with us tonight. We're going to start with our call to order and now roll call. I'm going to go around. Mr. Cuny?
President.
Mr. Carr not here yet. Ms. Leskey?
President.
Mr. McCollum?
President.
Mr. Dial here. So we have a quorum for the five members. And now we'll stand for the pledged leaders. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a action-packed school committee agenda tonight. Lots of things going on. But we would be remiss if we did not recognize at the outset that yesterday Marshfield announced a new superintendent, which happens to be our superintendent, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, Superintendent Schools. We certainly wish him the absolute best in his his future endeavors over in Marshfield. And we certainly recognize his contributions to our schools. Our schools are better for him having been here. So even though his departure is sad in some ways, the fact that he's been here and that it is so sad is something to be celebrated. So later on in the agenda, we are going to talk about the formation of a superintendent search committee that will kick off the process for finding a replacement for Dr. Sullivan, or rather, a successor to Dr. Sullivan. A replacement, I think, might be too strong a word. But in any event, I do want to give Dr. Sullivan the opportunity to quickly say any words. We are going to have a later on in one of the meetings here, a more formal way to recognize Dr. Sullivan's tremendous accomplishments and contributions to the district. But given that this is kicking off the process, wanted to just give him a chance to speak now.
Well, thank you Chairman Dial. And first of all, I'd just like to say that this particular opportunity was very unique for me and special for me because of where I'm from. I grew up in Marshfield. I went to school there. I was a teacher and a principal there for 20 years, and I have four children ranging from high school down to elementary school. They were there. It wasn't me. It wasn't just decision made easily. But for me, it's my complete career arc. And it's something that I've wanted and I've worked for my whole career. And this was an opportunity I did I did take. And I'm very happy to be to be the new superintendent of of Marshfield. But I want everyone to know that job doesn't start until July 1st. And until July 1st, I am completely committed to Cohasset Public Schools. I've loved my time here. This isn't a situation where I was putting my application out other places, you know, that that wouldn't happen. And if I hadn't got the job in Marshfield, I'd be really happy here at Cohasset. It's a wonderful community with amazing students, a very active and fantastic family base and amazing staff. So I'm very proud to be the superintendent of Cohasset, and I'll continue to work diligently to make sure that we have the best educational opportunities for our students. And I'll be very supportive of any role I can play in the transition process, making sure that I give the person who comes in, you know, the help that they need and in assisting in any way the committee or the screening team sees fit. So again, I'm I've been very humbled by my opportunities here, and I remain very thankful, very committed until I do move over to Marshfield. So.
Well, once again, thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
On behalf, we do wish you the best, and we will work diligently in the next couple of months to find a successor and to accomplish many of the punch list items that we want to accomplish before you move on to your your next chapter. So.
We'll do it together.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thank you.
So now we'll move on to public comment. This is the area of agenda where we open it up to the public for items not on the agenda. If you want to raise your hand and speak about something that is on the agenda to let us know that you'll want to talk about it, that's fine. But if it's not, if it is on the agenda, we ask you wait for that agenda item to participate. So do we have any public comments?
We do not have any comments at this time.
No public comments. Thank you very much, public comment. We now move on to our section on invited guests. We have a couple invited guests, and we'll start off with Ms. Ella Lynch, the superintendent student advisory council update. Thank you very much.
Maybe I'll have Ella, because I think this is the first time you you've had Ella here as a representative. Am I right in saying that, Ella? And I'll let Ella introduce herself. She's a junior. She's been an active member on our student advisory committee. It's been really amazing getting to know her. She's a great person and an excellent student. And maybe Ella just start off telling everyone some of the things you're involved with at Cohasset Public Schools and then take it away with the update.
Okay, so my name's Ella Lynch. I'm a junior and I'm on the track team. I'm involved with student council, obviously, the superintendent's committee, the National Honor Society, and then some clubs like the debate team, math team, stuff like that. And there's definitely been a lot going well with like the student life of Cohasset High School. Winter sports have just started up, which has been really great. And then a lot of people have been enjoying those. Last week, there was also the fall school band concert for the high school and chorus concert. And there was also the middle school band and chorus concert the week before, which was really great. Some of the high school band and chorus members also got the opportunity to go down to the Ausgood and Deer Hill Schools, which was really fun for the holiday tour and got to play some fun music for them. It was great. There's also the National Honor Society induction ceremony a couple of weeks ago, which was really well done. And right now, student council is hosting pickleball tournament at Utility, which I remember a lot of people participating in and are really excited about. So that was fun today. We got to watch the second day of it. And then some other clubs have had like meets and their first like, sorry, yeah, meets, stuff like that. I know the debate team had their first meet a couple of weeks ago, which was great. A lot of people had some success there. Math team had their first and second meets, which was great. And then also, I know Model UN was just assigned their countries for the upcoming conference in March, which were India and Afghanistan. So that's going to be a pretty cool opportunity for people to get to go there.
You said India and Afghanistan?
India and Afghanistan.
Nice.
And people got to choose their committees.
Yes. Thank you. That's great. And I'm sure you're looking forward to break as well.
Yeah, I think everyone, teachers and students are.
Yeah, you throw a sort of a storm day in there and it becomes kind of a topsy-turvy week for sure.
There's been a lot of assessments and stuff recently.
Absolutely. Well, that's great. Well, thank you for the for the update. Turn it over to Chairman Dial.
Thank you very much. I'll see if the committee has any questions, comments for you. Mr. Cuny?
Ella, good job. First time doing it. And also too, it's I kind of checked all the boxes too. It's kind of like what all my kids are doing, right? I had the pleasure of being judge on the debate team last week. As a matter of fact, that's why I missed the committee meeting because we were down there. I want to say.
All right, Jeff, do it again?
Yeah.
I was supposed to be in the last one as well.
Yeah, and that brought me to like thinking like it was it was great too. They had schools from all over the all of the situation. And I just noticed that it would be nice if we had some sweaters that saved.
Great idea.
I think that would be because we saw some other schools that had it. So I was hoping to maybe come up with an idea to kind of raise money to do that. I talked to Jason about it too. So hopefully we can do that. And yeah, he nailed it. So good job.
Mr. Carr?
Good job for no notes. Awesome. That's cool. The did you say in the court?
I was in the bit.
You were in the bit. Okay, cool. Good job. It's excellent. Concert was great and well attended. And I agree, it was it was fun to see young people with tremendous talent all in one place. So that was that's great. We welcome you here. We look forward to having you back again. Nice job.
Thank you, Ella. I feel like it's such such a gift to us to have a window into what's going on with the students in your report. I feel like hit everything from athletics to academics to the arts to social life. And so thank you. It was very well done and helpful. Enjoy your break.
Just just welcome Ella. Thank you for being willing to do this. It takes a little bit of coverage. So thank you so much. You did a great job. We'll look forward to that. Back.
Thank you.
Ella, I just have 17 particular notes I want to give to you. No kidding. I think you did a great job. And just to echo what this Leskey said, this this these reports are very important to us as a committee so that we have a good idea of what's going on in the schools from the student's perspective, because our role is to make this schools great for you. So thank you for taking time out of your evening to come talk to us and look forward to seeing you come back.
Thank you. Have a happy holidays. And thank you. You can go, I have to say. Thanks. Thanks very much.
So next on the agenda, we have a report from the school facilities committee from Mr. Jason Hurls. Just for a little background here, this is a slightly new agenda item, but not really so new. We used to have a standing agenda item for facilities committee when we had overlapping membership on the facilities committee. Mr. McCollum would give a report of what's going on in the facilities committee. And then as we changed membership at that committee, that fell off. So we'll have more periodic but updates from the facilities committee. Just as a reminder, actually, as a reminder for people who are watching in the committee itself, maybe give us a little background on the facilities committee, what you're doing, and then, you know, what's what's going on there with the initiative you're taking on.
Sure. Obviously, we're formed to assess the conditions of all schools. We got our preliminary report on those. From those, we had that priority list. So we're working through that. Put forth, obviously, two articles at the town meeting that both passed. So we're working currently on the feasibility study, which I'll get into a little deeper in a minute, as well as trying to prioritize the stabilization fund. To there's a long realist, a lot of items, a lot of big tickets. So it's a long list. We're just trying to pick through it, prioritize it, to you guys, to the select board, so that we can get around the next for the next town meeting. As what we're doing right now. We had our meeting last night. We, as a committee, we're going to form a subcommittee for the feasibility study to send out a progress proposal to get some firms in to help us with this study. So we're gonna we're gonna start that. I got the wheels in motion. I sent the email to Michelle suggesting membership. I have to reach out to the parties involved to see if they have the time for it. So once that is is completed, the town, Michelle has already created a draft R and P, which I looked at briefly today, has everything that I believe we want on it. But we'll bring that at a later meeting to you guys to for vote approval and so on and so forth. So that's feasibility study. As for the bigger ticket, which is the stabilization fund, I have requested some information from Nick Burardi, the facilities of the town. Because one of the big items that we're looking at right now is roof replacements, because that's one of the one of the top priorities. And I know there was some talk with the alternate energy committee about solar. I want to see where that stands, because if we can get that, then most likely we can get the roof paid for through grants to the state and so on and so forth. So I am trying to get with Nick and where the head of that committee is, which is the president. Backgrounds been done, so talking to what, and try to push that one way or another so that we can actually present something to you guys, to the select board, to the town, on how we're going to start out getting this money. So that's where we're at currently.
Great. Thank you very much. The other update I think that is overlapping is MSBA.
Yes, unfortunately, a hung bug, the grid showed up. We did not get accepted. We are going to march forward and apply yet again.
Absolutely.
Sullivan, I'll need your help.
You got it.
Spinning that again. Copy paste, change the date.
No. Keep keep working.
Yeah, so we'll just we'll just keep at it and we'll go from there.
One question that was brought up to me on MSBA in connection with roofs, is there a I think there's an accelerated repair program that's also separate that is every couple of years. And I think this is the open window for application on that.
Yes, it's been closed for the past three years, and we just recently learned that it was open again.
Yes.
So we can apply for that, which I suggest you probably should. But I also want to, like I said earlier, if we don't have solar, I would rather get that money different route and use that alternative repair for some other big items if we can.
I raise that just because I want to make sure we don't miss that window if it's a it's an open window that closes. So let's.
It's it's the same, if my understanding is correct, it's the same basically timeframe as.
It is up until, I believe, early April.
April, yes.
Okay. Usually it's right before April.
So we've got some time to assess.
Really great typically lines, close to that, just to be.
It'll be here before we know it.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely. Great. Well, thank you. I'll turn it all over to the floor to the committee. Any questions, Mr. Cuny?
Jason, first and foremost, thank you for. It's gone from really nothing to putting applications together, stabilization funds. It's just your work is just so good. I appreciate that. Also too, is like, what I'd like to do is if it's okay, you want to reach out to Senator O'Connor and ask him to go to meetings. I'm sure he would, to try to educate us on what other school districts are doing, because he represents eight towns. Cities like Waymouth that just did a middle school. So I think he's he probably being valuable to see what we can do to kind of move it forward. Because it's basically we're kind of stuck in neutral now. Like, you know, we're talking about like, are we going to get new school? We're not going to get new school. Meanwhile, we have these problems that persist as far as air conditioning, the gym that we still have in the conference. So like, I really wonder if we can maybe even ask you to come to the subcommittees and facilities funding and subcommittee and really dial down on some of the air conditioning issues, especially the ones in the gym itself. It gets, you know, 90 degrees in there and it's really unsafe. So I'd like to work with you on that. And then as far as the stabilization fund, we're trying to prioritize what we're going to do as far as like, what can we do now? What can we do, you know, tomorrow, the next day, the next day, the next day? Because basically, that's where we should be having is a really thought out plan of what we can accomplish six months from now, a year from now, five years from now, 10 years. So not knowing what we can do, we're kind of stuck in the middle, you know? So I and I also like, I think that you guys could take the opportunity to kind of see if there's an appetite for a $200 million school. I personally don't think that this town would go for it. I just think because of where we're at as far as like the funding, we're 20, 25 percent. We only have 7,000 homes in the town. It just, you know, like, I just want to get kind of broad. Like, what are we going to do? Like, I just feel like we're just stuck in neutral. So if we can try to get that.
Well, I I think that's part of what the feasibility will have to do with. And that's why we want to get this subcommittee going. Like I said, we have our press proposals already written. So that's, you know, that was the bigger step, getting that piece of paper together. So I have no problem presenting next month on that. Just get it out the door and start rolling. Yes, we don't know what we don't know.
Right. And again, thank you for you and the committee. Thank you for us.
Will do. Thank you, Mr. Cuny. Mr. Carr?
So thanks for coming. This is great. Excited to hear from you. So thank you for that. So I'm the liaison to the alternate energy committee, and there you go to talk about roofs and solar opportunities. And the chairwoman here is Toni Lodelle, and I'm the trade committee.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Should probably call before the end of this meeting.
Ms. Leskey?
Thank you for the perseverance of the committee to stick with this through some some hiccups. I think that that is critical to this whole project is to keep the momentum going. And I'm looking forward to really close collaboration going forward around working together to prioritize the needs of the building. So.
That's just a cap. We do have one open position that this committee needs to appoint. So the select board has two, which I believe is going on their January agenda. Where the committee's kind of late right now.
So is it, excuse me if I talk on some, is it because we, three of us were on it at one point? Now, is there any of us on it now?
There's there.
You still?
Kathleen Burns.
Who was a school committee appointee.
And Alyssa.
Who was a school.
Melissa McDonough. Jen Boylan was, but she decided against it after a few weeks or a few months of service, that she would be able to fill all the obligations. So that just happened fairly recently. Yeah, like. So to find someone who wanted to get on in Jen's place.
So if could a school committee member be like, could I?
No.
No.
No, it's I think that folks took issue with that.
Okay.
We, you know, you and I had initially done that so we could get it off the ground.
Yeah.
It's hard to popular commit it all, get things rolling. And now it is. Jason's been a leader, like a recent exception. So basically, just need to name someone. So I'm sure there's someone out there willing to do it. Maybe, I don't know, I'll just message and get some volunteers. Maybe people know off the top of their head.
Can I still sense you would you be looking for someone? Is there anybody?
Somebody I prefer somebody that has children in the school system. That would be good. Someone with finance background, building background.
Okay, great.
Mr. McCollum?
I work pretty closely, Mr. Earl, so I don't have any questions for him.
Mr. Earl, thank you for coming, taking time out of your evening for this. Thank you for all the work that you've done on the facilities committee. I guess my only my only comment is to make sure that we're working closely together, especially with the finance facility subcommittee on the prioritization of of funds for our stabilization fund. Any of the giant capital expenses, we want to make sure that we're growing in the same direction. We don't want to have a situation where we're at cross recommendations and whatnot. So. But very much appreciate all your do are you do for us and looking forward to hearing more about the feasibility study as that develops. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we've moved through our invited guests, agenda block C. We'll go to school updates with any school news from our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Well, Ella did a nice job, as you, as many of you pointed out, kind of encapsulating what have what has happened over the last couple of weeks. I will mention in addition to the middle school and high school concerts and the high school going to Ausgood and sharing music with them. That was a really wonderful scene, by the way. I actually, I tweeted it out or Xed it out, whatever it was called now. But to give a feeling for it, it's really a sing-along with our youngest students and our high school students. And one of the things that's so special in Cohasset is these traditions where the students who are actually performing remember when they were the students watching, you know, like these rock stars come and perform for them. So it's a really nice moment. And Ms. Moriarty, Mrs. Moriarty does a wonderful job. She's our director of fine arts and music, six through 12, does a fabulous job orchestrating that. And that was an amazing, amazing moment. And then also, we've had Ausgood, Joseph Ausgood, what she called Principal Farrell refers to as the holiday strolls. And that's a reference to the fact that after watching their students perform at every grade level, families get to take a stroll down the hall to the cafeteria to do some arts and crafts with their with their children. Very warm and just absolutely adorable to watch those kids perform. And this year was special because Principal Farrell added a story, I believe it was called the 12 Days of Winter, which was very participatory. Great job, Mrs. Farrell, Principal Farrell, if you're listening out there. But they were they were great. And then we do have a Deer Hill concert tomorrow that was delayed because of the storm. And that's only my my last update is just to thank everyone, particularly our staff, for working hard during the storm. You know, it's it's not an exact science predicting what's happening and listening to forecasts. It looked fine when we were leaving in the morning and, you know, the the storm was a bit more violent, I guess, than than maybe we had thought it would be. And we did make a determination during the day that it was better to have our students in the buildings. It was nearly 60 degrees. So our buildings were warm. Not a great learning environment. However, learning happened at every level. Our teachers and other other people worked together to to make sure that everything was safe and the learning was happening. We were able to serve a hot lunch at every building, but certainly not an ideal scenario. So I really want to thank the staff at all levels and the principals at all levels for everything they did. Also, our safety officials were great and very collaborative with me and making sure that, you know, we made the right call on on what to do in that circumstance. And then I tried to be as communicative as I could over the the time when it was happening and then also the day that we had off. So we will make up that day. So you can add that to the calendar and my newsletter. I'll put it in the calendar. We're making the adjustment on the on the website to denote the last day of school. So it shifts one day forward for everyone. That's really all I want to update on. And we're all looking forward to to a nice break and a very well deserved break for our staff. And I know our families are looking forward to it as well. So and certainly students.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. That brings us to our teaching and learning block, agenda block here. And we'll start with an update on the elementary digital district, digital citizenship curriculum. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Scholz to kick us off. We also have some some other participants as well.
Do. So we have Luke Kay, who is the middle and high school instructional technology specialist. And we have Cassandra O'Brien, who is our elementary instructional technology specialist. And so they're going to give us an overview of digital literacy and citizenship from grades K through 12. And so I am going to start with that.
Thank you both for being here.
I really appreciate it. So I want to welcome you. They will talk us through.
Thank you. I just wanted to, so you can go to the next slide if you want, just give an overview of devices and things that go on with technology, not just in the classroom, but computer class. So in grades K to 2, there are 12 shared iPads in all the classrooms. And in grades three to five, third grade has 12 shared Chromebooks. And there are one-to-one Chromebooks in fourth and fifth grade. The district uses K to eight clever as our single sign-on for students to access district digital learning resources. And that can also be a launching place for teachers to share links in addition to Google Classroom. Our curriculum is based in Massachusetts State standards as well as the ISTI standards, and that's the International Society for Technology and Education. And students in grades K to five have a technology class once a week. And in addition, during common planning time, it rotates as an additional technology class. The instructional technology specialist, which is my role, meets with the elementary computer lab instructors to collaborate in lesson planning and curriculum. So that's kind of how we start out. So at the Ausgood School, our digital literacy program involves students learning just how to manage a device, the Chromebooks during computer class, and logging in, manipulating the mouse and the trackpad, managing headphones for their keyboarding lessons, navigating to websites or a location needed for instruction. And it involves coding and participates in the hour of code every year. Students are also introduced at the K to 2 level, Google apps for education. And as it relates to kindergarten, they are joining Google Classroom in ways to coordinate instruction. So as far as digital citizenship lessons, our kindergarten through second grade, they're reviewed and throughout the year and reinforced from kindergarten from in first and second. And recently, Common Sense Media for Education has partnered. And, and recently, Common Sense Media for Education has partnered with Keyboarding Without Tears, and it's sort of integrated in that curriculum that we use for learning keyboarding. Um, some of the specific, uh, lessons on digital citizenship include, um, that's private, where students are learning, um, uh, what is considered personal information and what's not appropriate to share online. Uh, another lesson includes media balance, which is balancing screen time, knowing when and where they should be using online, uh, resources. And another lesson is pause and think, which is reviewing the, being responsible, safe, and respectful online. And, uh, how technology makes us feel, I think this is a really important one. How sometimes when you're using technology can make us feel different ways and how important it is to reach out to an adult and, and share how they're feeling about the use of technology. And safety in my online neighborhood is being safe online in the different various places that they may be going online. And pause for people, it's a nice transition for when it's time to put the technology down and transition to something non-technology. And, um, the digital citizen, uh, pledge, sort of reviewing what, what's important and time spent, screen time, and being safe and respectful. Over to the next slide. Thanks. So at the Deer Hill School in grades three to five, the literacy is composed of keyboarding, which is increasing their words per minute and finger key combinations, and the device basics, they continue using Chromebooks in computer class. And using the digital, or excuse me, using the Google Apps for Education tools, you know, increasing and spiraling on that learning, um, increased skills. They also, uh, participate in the hour code and, and they do coding throughout the year. And data analysis using Google, uh, forums to collect information and looking at graphs and things. Uh, we also have a three D printer that's, um, mostly used by defraiders for projects and using coding program, TinkerCad. And.
It's been some wonderful projects with that.
They definitely do. And they also touch on navigating the MCAS online practice test, so they can be prepared for doing that. And as far as the digital citizenship, uh, portion, they continue the same, you know, lessons, a little more detail for online safety, information privacy, uh, they have, you know, the digital pledge, being safe, respectful. And netiquette, they don't use email at the elementary schools, but they sort of do a mock, you know, what, you know, put on attachments and open email for people we don't know. Also delve a little bit more into the copyright, what's okay to use, fair use, and, um, the public domain information. Um, also touch on media literacy at this grade, uh, at the fourth and fifth grade level. And, I think, move to the next slide.
In terms of the amount of time that they meet, is it similar to the, was that for all elementaries? I just want people to get a sense for.
Right, they have computer class once a week for, uh, uh, one period, once a week, but then also are, we're taking, um, a specialist during the teacher company. Does that make sense?
That's right, so the same as it was presented. I, I think that was encompassing.
Oh, sorry.
Yes. I just, I'm sure you did, I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Sorry.
That that was, that there's time there centered in both spoke buildings for kids to get, um, technology instruction.
Mm-hmm.
That's.
Once a week.
Once a week, and then a ro, the, a rotating, uh, common planning, so each.
Sometimes it'd be twice a week, every once in a while.
Correct.
And I was going to say it's later, but also the classroom teachers with the devices in the classrooms are mirroring the language and the concepts of digital citizenship, you know, as needed.
Cause that, cause that curriculum's woven into everything, right? You, so they're getting reinforced in it, but it's specified, specific instructions.
Definitely enforcement classroom, classroom. And I also wanted to point out that in, uh, health class at, at Deer Hill, there are some, uh, there's a book that the health teacher, um, uses called The Mouse and the Monster, and it's working on students being assertive and communication. And you don't have to reply, especially to negative communication and taking a break from relationships, setting boundaries, identifying unhelpful or helpful communication and using I-statements, which, um, addresses the ISTI standards, but also, as we go to the next slide, it also, um, I really like how the, um, Dig-Sid, uh, collaborated with ISTI and using these I, these positive statements for I'm inclusive, I'm informed, I'm engaged, I'm balanced, and I'm alert, which, um, I think is more of a positive spin. And, uh, we wanted to put in some quotes from students when they were asked, what is one thing you've learned about digital citizenship? So, um, I'll just read them loud. So when strangers talk to me, when I'm playing a game, I don't respond, and when I do, it's private chat with someone I actually know in real life. One thing I have learned about digital citizenship is that when you send something on text, it is always there and you cannot take it away, even if you delete it. Uh, I learned anything that you post online can be seen by anyone. And. Also, so I learned that anything you say or post online leaves a digital footprint, so they're actually using the language that is being used in instruction. When you set up an account on a site, they use your information, that's a really safe one. Um, and only say things online, you would say in person, kind of, um, to be, and, at like saying, never, it's never a good idea to post any information that you wouldn't want your parents or teachers to see. And choose wisely what you say or do online, because anything travels anywhere, so it sounds like they really have concept of that. But to also enforce the digital citizenship and curriculum, um, I have, um, was taking a class this fall, and I decided as part of my professional goal to meet once a week, no, once a week, I wouldn't like that, once a month with the classroom teachers and go over the ISTI student standards, just so we can all have, you know, it's always good to review and refresh and have, say, common language for not just digital citizenship, but digital citizenship as well.
It's important teachers do weave this in and out, just like, um, Cassie was saying, and they come, these topics come up. It comes up in stories and articles and all sorts of things, so there's lots of conversations around how to be safe, um, what your impact is, and maybe tie it to bullying, um, and having this conversation about what's appropriate and what's, what's safe behavior. Right, thank you. Lindsay will be looking at middle and high school.
So at the middle school and the high school, um, we are a BYOD building, so the students are required to have their own device before they get here on day one in sixth grade. Um, and because of that, you can't really look at digital literacy or digital citizenship as kind of a standalone, technology-only kind of topic. It has to be kind of, uh, approached by basically every subject in the school. It's not a standalone thing, why the kids, it's their life, you know, so, um, that list on the right is just some examples of the classes that really touch base on it hard, but I think every teacher in the building will say that they're driving home, uh, reinforcing the topics that were already introduced at Deer Hill and Osgood, but, um, Alyssa, go ahead. So, one of the classes they have in middle school is digital literacy and computer science. They can take it in sixth or seventh grade. Um, I can speak a lot about this one, this is actually my class that I teach. So, we do a unit, um, in a program called EverFi Ignition, and it's all about digital wellness and safety. And they go through four topics, connections and community, which kind of touches upon sort of the pros and cons of social media and online relationships. Um, sometimes you can make great friends, sometimes you might meet people you don't want to talk to, that type of thing. Um, safety and privacy, how to keep your information safe, how to avoid online predators. Um, the students actually just finished that lesson last week, and as kind of a wrap-up, they had to create, they had to research a social media app that's popular with their age group right now. So they may or may not have used it, but they at least kind of know the gist of what it is, and they had to come up with an infographic to share with someone else their age of how to use it safely. Um, and kind of give a background on like the company that made the app, average age of the users, what kind of safeguards are in place? Are there age restrictions? If there are age restrictions, is there a way that the app actually verifies the age or can the kids just put in, yes, I'm thirteen? I, and the app lets them on, so it's pretty eye-opening for the kids. Um, and they also did an activity where they had to Google their own name, see what came up. If anything came up, is this what you want to come up? Are you happy to see this? How could we have avoided this? Um, and then they got really into that, they started Googling their parents. And some of them went home and had a lot to share with parents about what they may want to tweak their settings on their social media. Um, screen time versus online. I think I mis-typed there, but screen time, that's basically a media balance, screen time versus offline time. And then technology and data, we just finished today, actually, um, that was about like online scams, phishing for information, um, how to really dive deep into those emails and texts that they're getting saying, you know, your Amazon package is about to be delivered, but you need to click here to verify, and it takes you to put in your name, address, phone number, data for all that stuff, and, um, they did a great job, they actually had to make, they had to design two scams and a legit message, and we put it into a cahoot for the whole class, and they had to try to figure out which ones, so it was a lot of fun. Um, and then when we move on to coding, which will be after vacation, we don't necessarily use the language of we're still learning digital citizenship, but it keeps getting reinforced because we use, um, online coding communities where the kids are encouraged to kind of remix other people's work to learn from what other kids have done, and then give constructive feedback. Um, they get warnings if they are kind of behaving in a way that they shouldn't be, giving nasty feedback or anything like that. Um, and then we also do an activity where, uh, it's called how will this post affect me and what will this person think of this post? And they're given like simulations of text messages or Facebook, Instagram posts, whatever they're posting. And then it pops up and says like, okay, your grandmother just read this post. Now, how do you feel about it? You have to kind of think like, ooh, maybe I didn't actually want grandma to see that, or maybe I should read it twice, so. We really do a lot, cram a lot into one trimester, so that's sixth and seventh grade. Um, in seventh grade guidance class, they do a unit on basically how to manage the feelings that are caused by social media. Um, so again, they discuss the positives and negatives. Um, they just under, they talk about technology addiction, why it happens, um, why it's so hard to like break away from technology addiction. Um, they watch a episode called, um, Social Media, it's on Brainchild on Netflix, which I guess is kind of like a middle school-aged sort of, um, modern-day Bill Nye the Science Guy type of thing. Um, and I actually watched it today to kind of review what it was about. It talks all about how the posts you're seeing on social media are not the reality. And it shows actually a girl taking a selfie, and she's in this beautiful dress and her hair is all perfect, but then it kind of zooms out of the shot and it shows like her clothes all over the floor, and it shows her mother like yelling at her, and it shows kind of the reality of the situation. She's not just this perfect, happy, calm girl. Um, it talks about kind of the psychology behind following what other people are liking online and seeing a post that has like a hundred likes kind of makes a kid's brain think, oh, I must like that too, if so many people are liking it. And then they start to kind of follow the trends. Um, and it also talks about how people's ambitions are lowered when they're posting from behind a screen and anonymously, and how they, um, just feel more, I don't want to say empowered, because it's, makes it sound positive, but they're still a braver about posting things they might not say in person. Yes, um, so.
More emboldened.
Emboldened, that's the word, exactly. So, that sounded great. Um, the intro to research class in grade eight is, when I touched base with Mrs. Saruti about this, she said my entire class is digital citizenship. Whole class, she was very proud. Um, they kind of step a little bit away from the cyberbullying and the social aspect, and she focuses totally on research, plagiarism, copyright, fair use, public domain, databases, um, sharing of files legally versus illegally, um, evaluating websites, citing sources. And she wraps up her class with a gigantic, um, research symposium. I don't know if any of your kids have gone through middle school or high school yet, but it's a really awesome project that they do. It's a sustainability showcase, and they have to get all sorts of different sources from databases, they have to conduct interviews with, um, local experts in whatever topic they choose. Um, but all of these topics that she's covering are also reinforced in ELA and civics as well, so kind of leading through the curriculum in this whole building. Health and Wellness, they have this, um, they have Health and Wellness, grade six through eight. The entire second trimester, which is right now, is focused, focused on health and wellness, so they don't go to phys ed as much, they're pretty much in the classroom learning all this stuff. And they touch base on everything they've already learned once, twice, maybe even three times already, but they're just kicking it off the notch. So they're learning about the digital world, um, cyberbullying, their digital footprint. They do a similar thing to me where they identify their own digital footprint, where have they been, what have they left behind, what's going to follow them in the future? Um, friendships in person versus online, and, um, oversharing online. Coding and Technology, which is an elective in the high school, they can take it anytime while they're in high school, it's a one-quarter class. They focus on, on the digital divide, which is essentially, um, the way that opportunities may or may not be available depending on someone's access to modern technology or lack of access, and the opportunities that may or may not be presented because of it, and how it sort of disproportionately affects, um, people of color, people of lower income housing, um, low-income households, um, potentially people with disabilities or older adults might not be given the same opportunities because they don't have the same access to modern technology. And then they go back to digital footprint, which we teach apparently every year or every other year. Um, they start to dig in to kind of the backend of the internet and how it works, as well as data security, network security, things like that, and then, of course, reinforcing cyberbullying. Ninth grade Wellness, um, is all about bullying, not just cyberbullying, but bullying in general and relationships in general. So in their, um, EverFi bullying course, they talk about relationships on and offline, leadership, resilience, courage, and community. So how to be, um, how not to be a bystander, how to stand up to bullies, stand up for someone else who might be being bullied, all that type of stuff. And then they also talk about sexting and messaging. Um, they use a video called Straight Talk about sexting and messaging. Actually sent me the exact description. It says, "True life stories offer cautionary tales about the dangers of sexting and anonymous messaging on cell phones and on social media. Students will learn that privacy is not possible on the internet, and once a nude photo or racy text is sent, it is likely to come back to haunt them. Viewers learn the downside of sexting, including possible charges of, of sending or receiving child pornography, being blackmailed by exes who threaten to release private photos, being labeled a sex offender, and experiencing severe depression about loss of control of their images, videos, and reputations." So we're telling it's a very impactful lesson and conversation, which is good. Um, in tenth grade, they follow up with a documentary called The Social Dilemma, which is all about, um, addiction and the corruption behind the social media companies, and how basically their main goal is to get people addicted, and they keep pushing their ads and making money that way. Social Dilemma, this investigative story on masked cellphone use, cellphone addiction, and social media corruption. The documentary includes a series of classroom discussion questions. The classes cover the questions in breakout groups and then classroom discussion. Students are encouraged to make changes in their own social media behavior. And then finally, in twelfth grade Wellness, they are very focused on relationships in general, whether it be, well, focus is having healthy offline relationships. However, they talk about how being online can affect that. So they work with a foundation called the One Love Foundation. Whose goal is to end relationship abuse. It's a nonprofit organization. Um, and, um, Mr. Sweeney says, we have partnered with the One Love Foundation to discuss how we navigate our relationships. One Love has created a video, video called Behind the Post. In this video, the students see how romantic relationships can be affected by online posts and social media influence. Students are encouraged and reminded that relationships should be lived in person, not online or on social media. Explanations and examples of toxic relationships propped up by social media influences are discussed in the workshop. One Love includes a series of questions for students as well as role playing and skit options. So I just wanted to add this in, um, if any families have any questions about how they can start to keep their kids. A little safer online, I think especially the younger kids. Central charging location, this was actually Mr. Mills' suggestion to me. He said he did this with his family. I guess he picked one location in his house, it was in his kitchen, he said. And everybody's devices, including him and his wife, they all had a curfew. And at say seven PM, everybody's computers, phones, whatever, they're on the central location and that's where they remain. Until the morning, basically until everything, till they're ready to walk out the door. Breakfast is eaten, teeth are brushed, clothes are on, homework's in your backpack. It just kind of keeps the kids from A, being too addicted. And B, having them in their bedroom and getting into, who knows what they're getting into. Families can identify some tech free times that are kind of non-negotiable. So maybe that's just the dinner table. Maybe it's from like Mr. Mills from seven PM to nine PM, something like that. Maybe every day the family goes for a walk together and that's a tech free time. Um, another one, this is on, I've actually been talking to some of my friends about kids about a lot. Ask your kids permission before you as an adult post about them or post pictures of them. It's really, I wanna see tempting, I mean. Parents are posting pictures of their kids online all the time. They're cute, they're proud of their kids, they wanna show them off, but. It can kind of create a psychological effect for the kid, like what people saying about the, oh, I'm online. Um, if your kid is a shy kid, they might really have an issue with that. Um, and you also kind of wanna set that example that kids shouldn't be posting pictures of people without permission either. So just kind of a lead by example type of thing. Um, and then discuss your expectations and the consequences of different actions often. So if you have, if you're buying your kid a phone, or maybe it's their device that they need for coming to middle school. What do you as a parent expect of them? And do you have a consequence if certain things get? If certain batteries get crossed. Um, there are parental controls on most devices that parents can look into. And they cover anything. They cover turning off the internet at certain times, turning off notifications. Um, requiring the app store to only be accessed by the parents versus the kids. There are sleep settings on the phone that can turn on automatically. I actually have that on my phone. So it, I think it's eight or eight thirty, my phone starts vibrating and it says time to wind down. And then my home screen no longer has any social media or anything. It just has like my alarm clock and the com app. Um, so that's super helpful. There are productivity timers you can use with your kids. So a lot of these will lock the phone down for like twenty minutes. While they do their homework and then after twenty minutes it will buzz and maybe give them a five minute break. So maybe for five minutes they can go on their phone and play a game. And then there's a lot of apps that give you even more parental controls than what's already built in. Um, the Screen Time app is awesome and the Bark app, which I highly recommend. Leslie, if you were the last slide, pardon me. I'm pushing this one because this is the one I have the most experience with. It's a really awesome app. It lets you monitor pretty much anything your kids are doing on their phone. From seeing their messages, um, seeing how often they're accessing different apps. What they're doing on these apps, what websites they're on, how much time. It has geolocation, geofencing, you can be alerted if they go out of a certain area. So maybe kids that are starting to walk home by themselves for the first time. Maybe if they take a right instead of the left they were supposed to take, you can get notified about that. Um, but when this app first came out. I, at the school I was at at the time, we had the benefit of kind of testing it out as a school. Um, just to sort of get a grasp of like what it was all about and it was great. We got notifications anytime the kids, anytime there was any kind of bullying going on. We got an almost instant notification. I would say within maybe like a five minute. Timeframe, but it also alerted us to other things that we weren't even really thinking of. Like kids who maybe were showing signs of having an eating disorder or any like suicidal. Idiation, idiations, anything like that, like any kind of questionable, anything that was coming up. The school psychologist was getting notified. It was just a really cool thing. So. I mean, that was six or seven years ago and they've come a long way since then. So I assume the parent options are probably even better than what I got to try. So. If anybody wants more info about that, you can feel free to reach out.
I think that was really, really, um, informative. I'll have the committee for questions and comments, Mr. Carr.
That was awesome, awesome, awesome. Um, and you know, I, I'm a prevention type of guy, very, that's a very proactive approach. Especially like now that my kids are in tenth and twelfth grade, I saw like progression that we went through from like sixth grade first of all. What do you do there? And, and I think you guys nailed it with like, okay, describe it then, then ninth grade. And then how, how important it is to, um, not post something that you might see ten years from now. Googling your parents, like, you know, that's just, uh, great stuff. Because I think it just tells them how important it is and you really don't wanna hurt yourself at the beginning of life, right? To post something wrong. Um, you know, I, I always try to avoid texts. Because no matter what you say on the text, it's just gonna come out to you that you say. No, I have staff which I, I call. So I, I, you know, I use that telephone way more than I do social media. So the idea like, even with, with people texting back and forth, I get so aggravated. Because it's like, you know, you just keep going back and forth, we just pick up the phone. Um, so that's, I, I love the prevention piece. You know, I, I do sit here sometimes and just say, you know, I'm so blessed to be on this committee, to see all the hard work that you guys do. But I always, at the same breath, I feel like we don't get this message out to the parents. It's like every parent in class, it should see this. We gotta let the participants show. Like what did we all do here? You know, in, in like that Bark app, that, that is a fantastic app. That every parent in class should know about. So, uh, you know, if, if, if somebody's listening out there, because these are things that take a lot of time and effort. Our, our administrators, that I, I don't feel like the parents are listening enough. And if, I gotta tell you honestly, as a parent, it is such useful information that I get to say. I just, I, I, I feel like I just wish other parents would get the information.
We'll put it in the navigator, we'll post it on our website, it'll be there.
Yes, I think, but one, one thing I do, I do think, I think the last two slides that Lindsay showed. Uh, really is, I think, the impetus of this conversation that we're moving into. Cause I feel moving forward, clearly there's a lot happening. And there's a, a breadth, there's a sort of a, a, a pattern of, of when we're teaching what, when. However, um, I think we need to do a few things. We need to figure out, first of all, gathering data, what our kids are going through. And what they, they really need at their particular age levels. These lines shift as technology shifts downward and moves all over. But more, perhaps as, as important, more important is what we do with that data. And I really think, um, that as we move into our strategic plan. Just as we did, if, if you think about when we had that safe schools committee and we brought people together around physical and social emotional safety. I think it's really crucial for us to bring the outside community, the, the families into the school. And to talk about what we're teaching and what we're doing so that we have this balance. You know, Lindsay mentioned the things that parents can do. Um, even Principal Mills' suggestions, a great suggestion, but I think having the conversations. At the family level with the school presence and partnering and thought partnering. Would provide a lot of support for families. And it would also provide us with a lot of information on what we can do to better support you when the kids get home. So I really see that as we look at our strategic plan and we look at wellness. We look at family and community engagement. We look at social emotional learning. You know, all those five competencies that we talked about, Castle, are all woven into this. And, um, you know, and as a father of four, um, kids who are at various levels in this technology spectrum. I'm going through it too, so I can absolutely see the need for that. So today we really just tried to give you a sense of what we're doing. But we know there's a, there's a desire for a deeper level of engagement and partnership. And I think that's something we need to commit to in the next strategic plan. So just wanted to say that. Mr. Carr.
This is great. Um, I learned a lot. Um.
At the lower grades, those loner assets, are, do you have any thoughts on, do we have the right now of them out there, twelve seed? Lonely or?
I think it was decided that it was age appropriate to be on device enough to. Have a one-to-one situation.
So everyone in that class gets one.
Fourth and fifth.
And in that, you know, as they're older and working, there are more opportunities that, that were stacked in this function.
Remember, third grade though, they are taking the MCAS on.
They are, and our hope is that we'll have a one-to-one in third grade. So that's, we have that in our budget for that. And then at the K two, they have iPads. They do have the opportunity to be on, um, Chromebooks in their classes. But, you know, we have enough iPads so that they're doing, you know, center work and things like that, but we don't want kids on, on the devices all the time.
And if I can jump in at the third grade level, we, they have Chromebook partners. So if there's ever a time where the whole class does want devices, they know who in the building they can go to and they arrange that.
I love, for instance, coding. I mean, that's amazing, right? It just blows my mind. We're teaching coding at that age.
Power code is great, I love it.
Remember, they are following the UST standards and the curriculum set by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. All's thoughts about, we gotta figure out how to get this, especially this kind of stuff out. Because I agree with you. You know, before I got, got here, I messed up all the time. And I read everything like that comes out from this, I just wouldn't miss it. I don't know how to do that, but how to get it out more. Really thank you for the work you do. It's great.
Thank you, Mr. Carr, Miss Lusky.
I would agree that I feel like it's both a communication issue and a cultural issue. Around, I think what you're kind of alluding to, to sort of a, a community wide, the issues around safety. Great behavior online, kind behavior, ethical use of, of technology. That that is both a, a school and a home, um, thing. And, and so I guess I, I have a bunch of questions. I, I learned a lot. Thank you for all of this. Um, are you finding, um, or how often do you feel like teachers in general are seeing? Issues that have started online entering the school day? So whether it's hurt feelings, distractions, um, et cetera, that whether it's coming from. Gossiping about schoolwork or gossiping about each other, um, in terms of entering the, the school day and distracting from. Going to middle school, I'd say a lot. Like weekly?
Um. Maybe we, uh, I think it comes and goes in waves. Um, and the severity of it, I think is kind of in the eye of the. Person who's involved in it. I think a lot of times it's, so, so didn't like my shoes and she said that online and to us were like, okay. But to them. It's a huge thing because it's middle school. Um, but I, I definitely think it leaves its way in and out. It helps, we do have the phone away for the day rule of middle school and that's actually huge. So they've got their phones on the buses, maybe they're dealing with those issues on the bus, but. At least it can't escalate while they're in the building, cause the phone's away. They might still be thinking about it. We can't get it out of their head, but we can try to distract them. Or if it's bothering them enough, try to get it out of them and deal with it, but at least it can't. Hopefully can't escalate too much when the phone's away, but it's definitely an issue.
There are school districts that do that, uh, all across the district. Boston Pexco is, that's what they do. They call YOLO bags.
Yeah, those zip things.
Yeah, YOLO bags. Put them in there at the beginning. I mean, I'm sure kids find ways around it at times, but. But that's their rule, right? And, and there is a, a move within the state, right? Encourage communities to consider that. Uh, but again, that's a community conversation. That's something we wanna have as a community. Uh, but these are the things that are, are, are at play here at the state.
Um, and then finally, cause I know we're, I mean, I could go on forever, but the concept of bystanders, bullies. And then there's also the upstanders. I wonder if you could just flesh out a little bit more, sort of how do you teach children? Because in my mind, this goes way younger than, I, I mean, in Oscar probably, when they're playing for walks and chatting with each other. Do the children know and are they specifically and explicitly taught how to diffuse, redirect? Um, stand up for someone, provide support, who are the trusted adults that they should talk to, what should concern them, what shouldn't concern them? So what are those sort of messages that are taught explicitly? And maybe, maybe it's less, more so in that sort of elementary age that I'm thinking here.
Uh, there's actually some other things that are, they are told, they're, you know, tell an adult, lock and report and take a screenshot. And share with an adult, those sorts of things and to not be able to understand.
Right, so, and do they understand to do that, not just when it's someone who's, um, an unknown, but when it's their. They're actually their next door neighbor or their friend that they like to sit with on the bus is, is doing, like sort of talking about those nuances of that, of that behavior. Because I feel like taking action when it's a little more nuanced, it's easy to block someone that you don't know. It's a little less easy to do that and there may be ramifications socially when, um, it's, it's somebody we do know. And whether or not that's sort of discussed as part of that conversation.
Right, it's broader than just in technology, right? So we have responsive classrooms, so all of those components are in responsive classroom, which is K through five. Um, and then, um, in their health class, they talk about it. And so it's part of, of kind of the conversation that happened outside, I, you know, I.
Absolutely, and I think, and even just on our playground, you know, at Deer Hill, where we talk about, we follow the skipper creed. But then we also talk about using your wit. So you walked away, you ignore, you talk it out, you tell an adult. And I think those are, that's ingrained in their processes for how they problem solve a situation in an unstructured environment. And it, it's really tricky because in my six years, I've seen the technology trickle down. When I first started at Deer Hill, you know, there really wasn't, there weren't many students with cell phones. And now cell phones are very present all the way down to third grade. And Apple Watches are like the bane of my existence, um, because they, they're phone, they're phone, they're just tiny. And so, um, we have similar to the middle school and a wake for the day policy. And today, one was brought to, you know, a student came to my, you know, office. Teacher told me to give you this, because it was the second time they had it out, you know, and so, um. You know, we're always working with families and, and we also understand and as parents ourselves that. You know, these kiddos are walking home and doing things where their parents want them to have that access and, you know, all the safety things. But that, that, that gray area of the school day is really tricky. And so where that middle ground, the middle school and I have landed on is it's off, it's away for the day. There, you know, we have all the resources you need in the school day and then sure, once you're dismissed, you can turn it on and then it kind of leaves our hands, which. Also sometimes bleeds into our sleeping.
Yeah, and I think the point of, um.
I think partnering with families is, I'm definitely hearing this message and brainstorming and thinking about PSO and. Other ways we can get this word out more, I think. Through my night, can we spend time with our curriculum nights and things? But this is an important topic and this would be a great way to tag on with a different kind of curriculum night or something like that, I think. It's just, you know, getting that engagement, maybe kids' tops, I don't know.
At the high school, the philosophy has been to allow, allow students to learn the responsible use at that age. These, this is what we have to explore. We have to explore, what does that mean? Is it actually happening? It isn't better to take the device away from them in the learning environment, knowing they have other electronic devices that they're using for learning. But these are really important discussions as well as how can we support you as the schools? And then what do the kids really need to learn, which I, we're doing a nice job with, but it's, as Alex said, it's. Things are moving constantly and we wanna make sure we know we're teaching to the right population. The skills we should be, some of that's set by the curriculum and the standards, but we need to. Some of that's set by the curriculum and the standards, but we need to shift that and get information.
Who else, Miss Leskey?
I'll, I'll carry that.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Collin.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. I, I, um, I'm really worried about this stuff. Because it's just no one sitting in this room experienced childhood with, with this, with this threat. To, to the level that our students, our kids are, are living in. So it's almost in a sense, difficult for us to even fathom what, what is actually needed, what is actually relevant. So, so I want to just preface my remarks with that. I just, I, I, I am very concerned about this area. And then there's also the consideration, well, how much of that is on the schools? How much of it is on the parents and the community? And, and I think that, I, I think the answer to the question is that the burden should be equally shared. Um, not everyone, if it is an education, would subscribe to that. I, I also want to just preface my comments with the notion that when oftentimes, I don't know how to say this without, I'm, I'm not targeting to view at all. I, I, um, I feel like when the school committee requests a presentation on a topic, um, there is like, um. There, there is a concern that we have identified a failure in a particular element. And, and that is why you're like here to report, you're at the principal's office, and that's not what it is, uh, at all. Um, it's, it's not, I, I, I've gotten that feeling from a lot of different groups coming here. It's not. What, what is happening is that we're trying to, it's, I'm sure the guy sitting in that chair right there would agree that. A, a school system is, is a, is a really complex entity, and there's so many different elements to it. That if we're just trying to keep our finger to the pulse of, of any possible problem, concern, area for improvement. And as Dr. Someone just said, or maybe it was Dr. Skoll, and someone just said the word evolving. This, this is certainly one of those areas that evolve. So I appreciate that you, um, both just went through everything that we're currently doing, and I appreciate everything you're doing. I, I do. I, I think that it's amazing. And, and, and I think my security is right on the point where we need to share that with the community more. So other people, you know, parents totally understand, because there is not an understanding, I don't think, generally to the degree that, what, what in terms of we are doing, you know? A, a full conference, understanding that. I, I didn't even have it in my own school. Um, I'm wondering though, like the, to me, the point of these conversations is to be critical of ourselves and think like, what, what is it? And Miss Leskey was sort of hitting on this, like with, with your comments, like, well, you know, what exact discussions are you having with the kids at which level? And how, you know, how, what, what I, you know? I'm wondering, like. And, and you were the two people to ask. Is there, is there, are there areas for improvement? Do you feel that all the instruction is relevant? Like, when I'm listening to this, I'm listening to some of the high school con, um, the high school concepts and the middle school concepts. I'm thinking, can't somebody just be shifted downward at this point in time? Like, aren't the kids even, like, I feel like, you know, like the, you know, addiction of, of, of devices? And the social media dangers could be introduced at like an earlier age, like in the elementary school level, instead of just the middle school. Like, there's a lot of, I don't remember all of them. I don't have it in front of me, but the middle school page, like the six and seven pages, um, that, that, those pages from the, from the slideshow, the slides. Um, listed, uh, areas that I felt are very applicable to like elementary students now. And, um, the elementary slides are certainly still relevant to elementary students. But I feel like, I feel like some of our older LE students are past that point. And same thing for some of our, like our eighth grade students, like you're introducing things about relationships and, and, and things like that for the seniors. But I think we need to get that into like the eighth grade. I mean, they're, they're, they're already having relationships. And the, these, this, the use of digital, um, devices and, and social media, that is hurting our students' healthy development in those areas. And I, I, you know, only so much of this can be cured through instruction, right? I mean, it's, it's a, there's a maturity issue. There are, you know, self-control issues. There are supervision issues. There's all kinds of things that go into this. But I'm just wondering if, I'm really concerned about our kids and the exposure they're getting. I'm wondering if, if our, if our curriculum is completely, i- if it's still relevant, if, if, you know, how, how often we're reviewing this. Um, and, and this isn't, I, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to pointing fingers or blame. I'm, I'm, I'm asking the two people that are most in touch with this area in our school district, like what you think? Like, where can we improve this? Where can we bring more to the kids? How can we, how can we broaden the LE students' exposure to these concepts throughout the day? Like you mentioned, like, you know, they're going to be once a week pretty much in, in tech, uh, or sometimes twice a week. Um, and it's used throughout the classroom. It's interwoven into the, the lessons. Well, how much though? Uh, because I'm seeing it, I'm seeing a much more robust exposure in the middle and high school level, because there's like he- health and wellness, there's guidance, there's a different, like, a lot more, um, different parts of their day where they're exposed more formally to these, to these concepts. And the LE students just aren't getting that, I feel like, frequently enough. Um, and, uh, you know, we have to worry about standards and, and we have to worry about the basics and math and writing and reading for sure. But, um, I'm just wondering if you see any room to integrate these concepts in a little bit more of a robust fashion? Especially for our younger students, late LE and the middle school students? So that, you know, we're arming them with, I, I, I want them to like, basically, I want to train our students to think twice. Whenever I, I tell all my clients, dance like nobody's watching, but text and email and use social media, like it's going to be used against your core one day, because it's going to. And, you know, I, I want, I want our kids to start thinking like that, you know, like, you know, is this really something I need to put out there right now? And, uh, so, so I'm just trying to explain myself, because I, I, I don't want you to think that, that the school committee thinks that our, you know, our instructional technology department is doing an inadequate job. We don't think that at all. But I feel like this is a very risk-prone area that we, we may be able to do more about. So I don't know, what do you, and I'm trying, kind of putting you on the spot, but I, I kind of gave Dr. Skoll the heads up in terms of what specifically we're looking for.
So I, I, just to, and I'll, I'll, I'll let you answer, and they are experts at, at working through this. But philosophically, just, I think this is a conversation to have, is we need to talk about certainly, you know, what we need to filter down to the younger grades. But also philosophically, when you think about what the students are capable of handling in terms of a conversation. I'll give you an example. When Common Sense Media sends out guidance about how we handle a traumatic event with different age levels. The guidance is different. And some of the guidance, when you're in K to two, you know, really looks at, you, you don't. You, you don't tell them about it. You make sure that you know they're safe and they keep them safe. So I guess what I would say is, I think we have to work together to make sure that we're not going to have conversations with kids when they're not emotionally and psychologically ready to actually deal with the concept. So that's when it's really incumbent upon families to work with us to, to say, you know, don't, don't have them. They shouldn't have a device in first grade that is a computer that has access to everything. And we can't teach a first grader some of the concepts they're dealing with on that device, because they're not emotionally and, and, and they're not ready for it. So we can't, we can't do that. That's why the standards look at child development. They look at where children are, and we target our work around child development. So I think, I just want to make sure that philosophically, we all have that handle. Like, we can't teach a first grader the concepts that a first grader is going to deal with if they're, a first grader has these devices. Because they don't get it. They can't. They're not ready for the device. So I think we do need to kind of temper everything we do with that. Now, with that said, philosophically, I think there are certainly things that are trickling down. And even though we mentioned a few of them, like the digital footprint, which seems to be happening in K to two, right? There's, there's probably, to your point, some more substantive concepts that we can really work on together. But that's why I think it's this partnership between the two of us. And I, I speak as a parent too. Because, you know, I, 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 I see them being, um, you know, definitely submitted to some of this as well. So I just wanted to say that, because I think that's a really important piece in what we're educating. You know, you can't teach a, a second grader things that they're just not ready to be, to learn.
But it's kind of my, it's kind of my point, is, is, is are we sure that we're on, on the crest of wave in terms of that? Are, are we making sure that we're actually presenting relevant information? It's not too, um, you know, dated in terms of what their ability to cope is, because they've, they've actually been exposed to this a lot earlier than they may have been. The same fifth grader might have been exposed five years ago.
Right. I mean.
It changes so rapidly.
It's, it's dated quickly.
Well, that's why we're here.
And then, right. And, and so we're also, um, on the seventh, we had the Health and, um, Physical Education Curriculum Committee come together. So we're reviewing all of that, and we have all new standards. And it was a large topic of conversation specifically about this. And so, because we have health wellness at the table, we have our, we teachers are also teaching wellness, all of us were there, and this was a topic. Um, and that was K through 12. So, um, I just wanted to add to that, that yes, this is something that we do need to look at, that we are looking at. And, um, we'll continue to do that before the changes like this.
And I think robustly, as we move, I mean, this is a great time to talk about this, because we're about to launch it on the next strategic plan. That strategic plan echoes the needs of the whole community, um, from a, a data standpoint. And part of that data is the qualitative conversations I have with people about what are your students dealing with? And we need to partner together to make sure that we create a solution as a community for some of these issues. Some of it is keeping the devices at an age level that's appropriate to them. Some of it is educating the students on the information that kids are just dealing with at a younger age.
I mean, a lot of apps have ages on it, thirteen, fourteen, just as Lindsay was saying, but can bypass. So we have to just together, work together, right?
I think a lot of the.
Good conversation.
Stuff that might not necessarily be listed in what we're specifically teaching does actually come up in like the classroom discussions when it's being taught, because the kids love to talk about this stuff. Like, I saw someone text this message, and then it, it kind of naturally, the teacher has to deal with what they just said. So it does kind of naturally come out, not necessarily on purpose. Um, and I, sometimes I think that's actually kind of a better way to do it, because you're not purposely being like, hey, second grader, that's never heard of this. Let me tell you all this stuff that might be too much. But two or three, yeah, two or three of them are bringing it up in seven-year-old language, okay, let's deal with this now. So I think some of that is trickling down more organically, not in like a formal structured way.
But I do think, I, I think as we regroup and look at this, I think we need to decide what we're going to approach with intentionality. And some of that intentionality, to your point, maybe at a younger age, um, that's, that's a fact of just where we live. So that's something that I think we have to think about as well. So I'm going to shut up a little bit, let them talk. But it is, it's a passionate subject.
Fourth graders on group text chats now, right? And it's like, and they're, and they're not responsible, and then I don't know if they're, and I, again, i- it's, it's a maturity issue. So I, I don't know if, how much you're able to impress upon them in a classroom setting. I don't know how much of that is on the school district, but it may be something we want to give thought to.
Yes.
I'm worried about our kids saying something mean to someone and it blowing up into some big thing where someone is hurting themselves or feeling bad about themselves. Or, you know, or, or sending naked pictures of themselves when they're in middle school, and it's just, and it ruins them, you know? I'm worried about that. And I just, I don't, I, I just making sure that if, if Mr. Brian was to think that we're doing everything that we can and that the instruction is as relevant as possible, and we have to white block that, 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 that tightrope, right? Of, you know, Mr. Tate pointed out, like, you don't want to introduce the concepts that may be like too, too, you know, e- emotionally mature for a, a particular subset of students. But at the same time, you also don't want to ignore it if everyone in the room already knows about it. It's like when you, you know, you decide to have the talk with your seventh grader, and it's like, yeah, yeah, oh, whatever happens goes. And so it's like, okay, well then, there was only so much value in doing that at that point, like maybe you should have done it two years ago, so you can, you know, so.
Even to like the Roblox, when you're talking about that, I don't know how many parents let their kids, you know, play games or say, do you have the conversation about, oh, this game is really cool. And you could talk to them, like, kids are like, oh, I can't really play that. My parents don't let me. So having that time.
Would that help? Would that, that, that gives me an idea, like, would it help to do like, uh, like some sort of tech survey with the families? Do you have a better idea of like per grade of what the kids are actually doing?
I wanted to do that before here, and I thought now we should do it more organized with, you know, we didn't talk about it.
I think it's right there. I think as we, I think that, I really think we need to look at that as part of our social emotional, um, branch of our next strategic plan, really hold out.
Yeah, I did that when I was the computer teacher, and I just remember asking the students. I was surprised. A lot of them didn't have parents that let them do things. So I think that's probably, right, it's ten years ago. I'm sure it's quite different now.
I'm sure.
That's a really good idea, actually.
And you know, COVID.
So they know what, what the topics, relevant topics.
I'll, I'll speak as a, as a parent for a second. I, I was determined to, to, uh, to wait till eighth grade to give my oldest son a, um, a device. I, I didn't, as COVID hit, and, and we made a decision that we were going to do it in sixth grade. So, you know, that was a decision we made. Um, it, it, I don't know if it was the best one, but it was a decision we made. So I'm right with you on this. You, you, you know, you're making calls, and we need to talk about it.
I, I don't know if there's a right answer. It's, it's that what we're, I want to be able to figure out all together. You know, we have the two experts for our district here, you know, and that's what, I, I just want to make sure, and I think that's a great idea. You know, an option to tell you what's going on. If you guys have a better concept of per grade level, what is most relevant. That's our, I think, Mr. Brian, that's a really good idea. We should do that. You know, and I, and, you know, I think the principals can add a lot of value to this too. You know, you, you guys are throughout the entire buildings all day, every day, and you hear the conversations, and it's not just in a particular class. You know, you guys hear everything. That, that can help too, in terms of trying to identify what is relevant for, for different subsets of kids, different, different levels of kids.
Right.
It's, it's, um, so hopefully we can, I don't know, I, 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 I've been going on for a long time, but obviously, you know, I, I, I really push to have this thing. I, I'm worried about it. I, I, I view this as a student safety issue, and that's why I'm worried about it.
Hmm, I see that.
And during my common panic time, when I go over the student standards, I'd like to be asking teachers, are they getting those conversations that are coming up? We're getting, we're getting, I'll mark you back on that, just to have a touch.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collin. Um, first, it feels like eternity ago, but the presentation was awesome. Very, very detailed. Um, I love the, I think that's, I think that's one of the things that we should talk about with the community. Because even for all, all the right reasons, but also underscores that the kid's information is their information, and that they should be responsible for it. And it, it gives them some agency. Um, well, the, the idea of the, the bar cap, I'm definitely going to look into that, and I like the ideas that have floated. The, the thing for me, and I share a lot of, um, Mr. Collin's concerns, and I'm sure I share broadly with the, um, with the community, the concerns. And no one here, I think, is blind to the risks of, of what's going on with technology. It'd be a great unknown that you have to, we're really raising a generation through devices, through, through social media, which we never had before. But I worry about, as the technology does move down, we have four graders on group chats, third graders. And I've, as a parent of a sixth grader, you know, I've seen the, what I'd say, some not good use of technology already. Some kids making bad decisions with their phones, uh, either, you know, posting or submitting things they shouldn't have, taking things, other things are put, put, posted, put out of context. So given that it's happening, I, that's, that's to me, like, should, can we be doing more to make it not happen? Like, so, and, and you can only teach so many things, and there are going to be people who, as many times you say, don't post stupid pictures of yourself, they're going to do it anyway, because kids are kids. But I just want to make sure that, that, um, we are doing all the things we're doing. This is a great list that you showed. Um, and I, I love that it's integrated in the curriculum as well. But I like the idea of keeping this top of mind as we're finding new ways to get, to get information. Um, and I think my takeaway from the committee here is, let's do, keep this on top of mind. Let's keep finding new ways to drive home what kids should, should be thinking about. And more importantly, actually, I think what parents should be thinking about, because I don't know that all the parents of third graders know that. I mean, how, how many third graders have devices at home? I don't know. Um, and then their friends have friends. I mean, I, I heard someone tell me today that, um, second graders are playing Fortnite. That's crazy! Um, but, you know, that, so, so, and this underscores, um, Mr. Collin's point. If typically playing Fortnite, then we almost have an obligation to kind of teach some things that we may have thought five years ago, but they weren't playing Fortnite, weren't relevant. Or they weren't able to consume. So anyway, I think this is a journey, not a, uh, not a single meeting. And, um, I, you know, this may be something we come back to in the spring.
Yeah, I think we should. I think, I'm telling you, we're formulating the plan, that's it.
So, and I guess my ask for you and Principal Sullivan, you as well, and everyone in the administration, please come to us if there's things that we can do as a committee to help out. If it's a funding issue, if there's capital need, if there's programs, if there's things that. If it's a funding issue, if there's capital need, if there's programs, if there's things that we can put on for our kids, speakers we can bring in, whatever it is to kind of help us protect our kids from the potential risks of these things that recognize they are there. I think you have the committee's full support of them. So thank you for for everything.
Just go beyond that, though, and like you've seen the conversation, you've heard the conversation, you've been part of this. So can you please, like, we are going to revisit it in the spring. Can you try and in the meantime, like, I I guess, you know, Mr. Brian, one of the things would be, you know, maybe we create a survey for the parents to better inform you as to where the kids are. Can you please think of a few ways to sort of capture like this conversation?
Help the wellness.
You understand what we're trying to to do here and it's not, it's not poke holes in our, in our, in our, in our tech program at school. It's to figure out how we can, how we can most effectively address this need amongst the student body. But mark my words, if we have a major student issue, I guarantee you it will be like to social media or 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 texting or something like that.
They usually are.
And we were trying, I I would love to avoid that if we can. So that's, so I just take it a step further. So so like when we do come back, oh, yeah, as a result of that first conversation we had back in December, here's what we we looked at and and Ms. Kay and I or Ms. O'Brien and I or Principal Sullivan and I, we talked or Principal Ferrell and I, we talked and we, you know, we thought we'd do this and and we sent or we sent out a survey, as you might have seen, or this and that. That's kind of what we would love to see, not to give you more work, but to sort of help our program evolve a little bit. If you feel that there is a need after you discuss amongst yourselves, and I'm not expecting answers or solutions right now, as Mr. Dial said, it's a journey.
And we have health and like I said, we have health and wellness that we're reviewing all of that. So in conjunction with them, because of such a big conversation of our six and a half hours together. So I think we can work. And create something, it's a great idea.
That's right. It's a perfect place for it.
Yeah.
I didn't think, too, not to add to this project, but recommendations for parents that are sort of, whether it is maybe like what you had up with that bar screen, I found very impactful as a parent. It was very, it was specific. It wasn't sort of these generalized ideas. And I know you've done parent nights before around literacy, mathematics, et cetera. I think that, you know, age level parent nights around technology, whether that's some sort of sort of smaller roundtable discussions or just even presentations about specific actions parents can take or how parents can be more thoughtful in their managing of technology at in the digital world at home, I think is is helpful.
So I'm gonna, this is where I might.
Draw the line.
No, no, not draw the line. This is where the wrong way is going to expose myself for not paying up to do our subcommittees. We have a subcommittee on community, community relations. And what I'm worried about is that I'm on it and don't don't realize it. But I think this might be a job for that subcommittee is let's have that subcommittee get together and talk about this particular issue. How can we better engage parents on this issue with the school? And first of all, who's on the committee? And then and then we'll we'll get a report from them when we have these at the end of our meeting. So that that'll help keep this fire going and keep the, keep eyes on it, so.
St. Harbor's Council, there's some outside organizations.
Oh, yeah.
They, we've done Screenagers with them and we've done other. Like, it's time for more of that. I always feel like the three, three community engagement areas every year should be something on drug and alcohol or there's something on anti-bullying and something on social media awareness, like at every level.
Yeah.
Like those three things really should happen every, at every level and that in terms of presentations and community.
So we'll look, look for a subcommittee together to to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great time, great, great work and.
Yeah, thanks for.
Really, really impressed.
Happy holidays. Thank you for coming, Principal Sullivan.
Of course.
So with that, we will move to academic initiatives updates with Dr. Les Scott.
Well, I already talked to you about our health and physical education. We have the standards just happened to work out that way that that was the cycle for us. So we started our work the seventh. They actually have been doing it all along, done a nice job aligning. Their curriculum, P K for twelve, they had time last year to do it also. So we're working on that and so they are moving ahead quite nicely. They're really wonderful revolve committees that come together due to curriculum on perfectly, really so thoughtful about what they're looking at and how we are aligning. And the curriculum mapping is still at the front of what we're doing, in particular with Rock and he's looking at all that with those committees. And wellness, we do have a wellness meeting next in January. You are absolutely right. And we had a, we unfortunately were having a slightly meeting with our committee, but unfortunately, after you took it down. So and Monday's the day and so we'll be meeting in February, the first Monday we could get was the very fifth. So lots of things are happening. Just because we were coming up to a break, there's, as you heard, Ella talked about exams that were happening for her. But I think no one is taking their foot off the gas, that is for sure. And we had our reading specialists and our math specialists meeting, we meet them monthly. And in our meeting, we talked about a lot of different things, but writing was very high up on our list of conversations. And so there was some really nice collaboration that was happening and talking about how we can, what things are happening, what we can do to continually improve our our writing for our students. So that's kind of a quick update.
It's interesting also is we're really getting more refined with data, being able to cross reference data points that are pointing in a particular direction. And I see that as a, as a definite direction where we're not myopic on one or two data points. But we're seeing trends of data that are absolutely telling us where writing is coming up. A lot of things.
It is, it's shown, yes, we already, we knew it was there, but having the data to support that and then allowing us to then dive into that data. Lisa Portis is extremely helpful. She has the data techno tech side and Rock has the other kind of gathering the data and analyzing the data. So it's really kind of a nice relationship right now.
It's kind of really helpful.
We're having, yeah, very interesting.
So am I hearing that the data that we're looking at is proving out that we still have work to do and we're improving our writing? It's something we knew, but it's it's we're seeing more evidence of that.
And we need.
It is, and it's also seeing how I think resources that we're using and assessments that we're using, we're being able to kind of, we're being able to see, oh, well, that is an indicator and it is supporting our students and it's also an indicator where they're going, which is that allowing us to dig deeper and say, okay, how do we then improve their their learning by really being targeted and very specific? That's because some of the things like iReady is allowing us to be able to do that and that and reading is just one of the ways that we're looking at. They have their MyPath diagnostic allows us to really pinpoint, not just say they don't know fractions, what part of fractions don't they know? Or in their writing, where is it specifically? You know, it's not conventions of the high, you know, the high school level. It's idea generation. Okay, specifically, what can we do around idea generation and in particular, what kind of generate? So those are the pieces of what we can add.
So that that's great and that's that's kind of what we, I think we're hoping this director of data position.
Exactly.
To be, to do that. I would be interested in kind of one of your upcoming academic initiatives updates is to give us some more specificity on what you're seeing and especially the things that you're putting in place, especially on writing. I know I said especially three times, I could probably use my own help on the writing part. That's clear that style, but that's something that I know that we're we're interested in. And so anything else for Dr. Scollins?
I would love to know a little bit more just about what kinds of data you're talking about, whether it's all standardized measures or whether or not this also is including things like teacher surveys, how many formally graded written assignments are children doing each year? You know, what, how did the curricular tools that that the district uses for or could better support what our performance on standardized has and whether or not those pieces of like sort of, we are not a statistician type person, like how our real life work in in the classrooms is sort of supporting and or needs adjustment to better support.
And also what they're seeing.
Sort of the standardized testing data, if that's what you mean by data, if it's all sort of within that standardized test.
Right, it's not all standardized, right. There's all different things we look at. So when we had our meeting with the reading specialists and Dearhill was sharing specifically how they were looking at their writing prompt, the the prompts and the writing and how they were drilling down to see where were those patterns, where were the strengths and where were the opportunities? And then how are we going to address that? So that all factors itself.
Yeah, and like A P performance, like taking something like writing and then going as far as like, so what are the A P scores of the children, of the students taking?
Right, exactly. Yeah, no, I agree, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Scollins. I think we'll move on to our special education update with Ms. Swonka. Ms. Swonka is zooming into our meeting because she has graciously decided to not risk infection of the remaining committee members. So I very much appreciate that. So, Mr. Swonka, you are in your Brady Bunch box on the screen here and we appreciate your, 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 your joining us.
Wonderful, thank you so much for allowing me to come at this time, this month and and in this, in this venue. So if I have the opportunity to share my screen, there are a couple of things that I would like to be able to present to you this evening. One is my regular update and another one is regarding some of the information on out of district that I'm going to share with Sue Owen.
You do have the ability.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Hey, she's, she's coming.
I am, I'm just sharing, I'm sharing my screen.
As I minimize it and then go back to share screen, it'll be there. Minimize whatever you have on your screen and go back to share screen and then you'll see it in an image. You are sharing now.
All right, here we go.
Your volume's very low on your mic, I don't know if you can turn it up. Maybe I was getting that a little low.
Is that better?
Well, give it a try.
Okay. So you can see here our our November report as I usually present to you. Our annual reviews totaled nineteen, two of them were out of district reviews, which were mine. Nine were elementary and eight were secondary. The annual reviews, once again, are the meetings in which we take a look at, you know, what the students have made in terms of progress over the course of the year that an I E P typically runs and make predictions for the following year. Our reevaluations and our initial evaluations are, of course, the meetings which involve testing and qualifying for special education services. You can see at the elementary level that we held four meetings in which students were found to be continuing eligible and one meeting where a student was not, which, you know, is a cause for celebration. They've made sufficient progress and have really been able to put into place all of the strategies that they need to kind of continue without an I E P. And at the secondary level, you can see that there were six meetings there. Four of them resulted in continuing eligibility and two of them also came off of I E Ps. If we look down at the initial evaluations, you can see at the elementary level during the month of November, we had four initial evaluations, one which came through M T S S and found the student eligible and then three parent referrals, all from co-hosts at public schools, one which found a student eligible for services and two not eligible. And at the secondary level, we only had actually one initial evaluation. It did come to us from a parent. I do not tonight have the data as to whether or not that was within or outside of co-hosts at public schools, but that student was found eligible for services. It was a very busy month, as you can see, sorry about that. Even though it was a shorter month with the holiday there, but but we we had a lot of good meetings and a lot of good things happened there. So I'm going to stop sharing this. I'm also going to share with you at this point in time that we've gotten a lot of parent surveys back since we last met and all of them have been a hundred percent in the positive range. So we're always happy to send out those surveys with the I E Ps and hear back from families how things are going. Any questions around that information before I move along?
Just a quick clarifying question. It's Jen Leskey. Is secondary nine through twelve or are you considering secondary six through twelve?
Six through twelve, yes, including the middle school.
Over the forty questions, comments for the committee. Ms. Swonka, please proceed.
All right. So this month, we also had a C P A C meeting. At this C P A C meeting, we had our annual basic rights presentation and it was very well received. There were, you know, some nice questions and feedback from C P A C members. And I know some people actually did outreach and said, oh, I wasn't able to come, where can I find it? And they were able to find the basic rights presentation very easily under my section of our website. So that was all, you know, really kind of a very nice meeting and always a good thing to share and very clarifying with families. So I would encourage anyone who has any questions around special education, that's kind of a a good place to look and a nice resource. Okay. Finally, I know that there were some questions regarding in district programming, out of district programming, so on and so forth. And I think that's actually the next agenda item that I'm going to share with Sue Owen. So I guess before we go into that, I should turn it back over to you, Chairman Dial, and see if there's anything regarding what I've presented so far.
I'll try to get the lady on the special education update when we want the next agenda board. Hearing none, I will then turn the floor back either to Ms. Swonka or Ms. Owen to talk about, Ms. Owen is vanished.
Actually, I'm going to start by sharing my screen.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to.
Talk about some in district program, programming and out of district programming. And I believe just for context, this was a request, I think I requested.
You did, yeah.
A month or so ago.
Yes.
Are there ways that we can maximize our own resources instead of spending it on out of district?
Correct, yep. And in a programmatic sense, can we build some, some, some programs out?
Spend the money anyway, I might as well spend it here.
It's a great question, so.
It's a very good question and and building in district programming is something that we always like to do. So if you, if you can see on my screen right here, what I did is I've taken the years that that I have been here and just kind of shown you so that you have some perspective about the kind of programming that we're talking about, the types of programming that exist, the number of students who are currently out of district and the percentages for each area. So for example, in the twenty 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 one school year, there were twenty four students who were receiving their education in an out of district program. Twenty percent of those students were in residential placements, thirty percent were in what we consider to be private schools. That meaning that it is not a collaborative, which is considered more of a public entity. Thirty three percent in collaboratives and other in seventeen percent. Now typically other here, what that means is that we partner, for example, with Situit around some programming that they provide for students that perhaps our students may benefit from. So when I entered, that was kind of where things were at in terms of out of district. If you look at the the next year, you can see that twenty one of our students were out of district that this percentage of out of district students, the actual numbers of students in residential programming doesn't change. It's that other numbers changed and therefore it changes the percentage because they're all just kind of compared to each other. But you could see there that that private went down and collaboratives went up. A collaborative is considered a lesser restrictive environment than a a private placement. Additionally, what's kind of interesting here was that one of the things that I really worked hard on when I came on board was I noticed that a lot of our, well, I I, it seemed to me a disproportionate number of our students who were outplaced because of issues around social, emotional or mental health possibly could be served in district and there was a lot of. possibly could be served in district. And there was a lot of work that was done very early on from the time I came on board through this 2021-22 school year to kind of address that. And some of those things were, we added a school psychologist at the secondary level, specifically at the middle school. Instead of having one service both the middle school and the high school, we placed one at each school and built capacity for them to do counseling in addition to testing. We added a social worker. We added consultants to, you know, to our district as a whole. And in addition to that, we started to build some features of some of our programming at the secondary level that would really lend themselves toward building into what we now have, which is some therapeutic programming. And some of our numbers, I believe, that are reflected here are connected with that. So we saw a need at the secondary level. We started to address that need. Some numbers of students being placed in private situations under those categories went down. Some collaboratives increased, but also the number of students who were outplaced went down. If you look in the 22-23 school year, you can see, again, you know, our private placements stayed at around the same place. Our collaboratives were also staying pretty steady with that kind of slightly increased number. And if you look at the 23-24 school year, you will see that that trend is kind of continuing there. As far as other things that we are looking at in terms of out-of-district programming and our own programs, we've built out therapeutic programming opportunities for students at the middle school and the high school level here in Cohasset. The other thing that we really turned our focus to, as you well know, after that, was expanding our pre-K programming. And we've really doubled that. And what that is going to enable us to do is to look at those students who are with us as preschoolers, as three- and four-year-olds, and what are the needs that we see there? And what can we build into our Osgood and Deer Hill programming specifically into some of our programs that we have there, such as STARS and the ILC, that will enable us, if some of our very young students are at a higher level of need of service, that will enable us to be able to address those needs and keep those students in district as well. And that is our next lens and our next focus for really being able to address the needs we see and through expanding some of our existing programming, being able to keep more and more students in district. We do see students who, if you look here at the other, there is a program in Situit that we partner with for students who may not be necessarily getting a diploma and need some services, you know, beyond the age of 18 and/or, you know, whatever the graduation age is, and require services until they are 22 years old. Those numbers are so very low for us. What we've done in our high school programming is we've really expanded it to look at a lot more pre-vocational programming for those students, and we continue to build on that and build things into it. And we are fortunate to have a neighbor who has programming that is more vocationally based and is a much bigger district and has the capacity to do something like that than we do, that we can partner with in a very fiscally responsible way to provide what we need for some of those students. If it's all right with you, I'll stop my share for a moment so I can see you and address any questions. If you would rather me keep it up so you can look at it and ask questions, I'm happy to do that.
If you don't mind leaving it up, I think it'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
What, before I go to the, actually, let's all open the floor to the committee. Any, I have some questions and thoughts, but I'll open to the floor first. I'll just open the forum on this one. Any questions for Ms. Swonka about this presentation?
Is, Ms. Swonka, is that, this is Craig McClellan. Is the overall number, like next to the years in each colored column, is that overall number, is that a percentage, or is that a number of students?
That's an actual number of students.
That's an actual number of students. So that is, that's the added district number for each year?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, I mean, that's essentially stayed the same for the last four academic years.
I think if you went back further, I think.
For the three.
And I guess what my question was going to be is, so we've got the number of students who are out of district, 24, 21, 20, 22, for each of the years. What I'd be interested in, and I think you started touching on this at the end of your remarks, but what I'd be interested in is, I assume for each one of those students, we have a reason that they are out of district. And, you know, whatever that reason is, and obviously, we don't want to share confidential information in a public forum. But what I'm curious at is, have you, can you collect those reasons? And kind of give us an abstract of, you know, it's, you know, what are they, what categories do they fall in? And do those reasons suggest that we should be investing in anything? So like, let's say, I'm just going to make it up. Let's say 22, of the 22, you know, eight of them are out of district place because.
Language-based.
Language. So if we were able to build a language thing here, we could recapture those students, bring them back into our district, and not spend the money that we're spending on that out-ofplacement, and instead spend it in district. And then we have, you know, we're supporting our goal of having a school community.
And maybe take in students again.
And potentially even take in other students as well. So I guess is that a breakdown that you have available that you'd be able to put together?
So that is something that I can speak about at this moment in time, if you will.
Okay.
Our students who are, for example, you know, outplaced residentially, they clearly have a high level of need that we cannot provide. Our students, as I was speaking about earlier, who, back here in the 2021 school year, were outplaced privately, a good number, a majority of them looked as if those reasons were social, emotional, and mental health, and it was perhaps felt that it was not being addressed as robustly here and that they needed that support elsewhere. And since then, we really built out that staff and that programming and have addressed that, and we've seen those numbers go down. We've seen some numbers go up in the collaboratives. That is a lesser restrictive environment. While there is a proportion of students who participate in a particular program in the collaborative, the grade levels are widely varied for those students. And it would entail the building of three programs for a very small number of students to retain those students in our district and provide appropriate programming for them, which would mean, you know, three teachers, probably nine ESPs or paraprofessionals, an additional BCBA, an additional occupational therapist, physical therapist, speech and language therapist, adaptive phys ed. Then the cost breakdown of all of that is equal to or higher than what it is for us to partner with our collaborative, and the South Shore Collaborative is ours in order to provide those students, you know, with the programming that they need. It gets very tricky because there are age ranges that you cannot cross with students. So students in a program cannot be more than 48 months apart. So when you have students of such different ages participating in the programming, even if they are of a similar disability type, building that programming gets very, very tricky. Program building was something that I really did in my previous district, which was a larger district. And so, you know, I can, you know, recognize kind of a little bit about, you know, where that tipping point is and when we really can grow something out and retain students, as we did earlier, and where we need to really kind of use the resources that we have. One of the things that I am looking at very seriously right now, as I said, is kind of our students who are coming in at pre-K. And what does that mean? Because programs do always develop and change for our elementary programs, our STARS and our ILC programs. Is the complexion of the needs of the student changing? And what do we need to do to make sure that we're going to be able to meet those needs so those students don't have to go out? And that is really going to be the next focus, much as the social, emotional was when I first came on board, the expanding of pre-K this year, that is kind of going to be the next focus to continue to retain our students here in district.
Oh, it sounds like what I'm hearing is that you, the ask that I was hoping for, you are looking at is, you know, let's look at the reasons that our students are going out of district and seeing whether it's economically efficient to do that here. And it sounds like for the collaborative, we're getting more value out of the outplacement service than would be if we were to bring them into the fold here and build out a similar capacity in this district.
At this moment in time, yes. Now, do I want to continue to build our programming? Of course I do. Yes.
So, but you're satisfied at this point that there's not a hole in our programming through which we're losing students that we should be retaining here and that the, you know, the economics would work out?
But remember, I, this is Craig McClellan again, Ms. Swonka. I think part of the issue, though, is that the first time I ever heard this concept was Ashley Kaleri had raised this sort of thing in 2019, when we first got on the committee. It's not just Mr. Dial's point, which, and he may be making bold points, I don't know. But, yes, we'd like to retain our own kids, our own students, and provide them services they need here in district and not pay out-of-district tuition for that. But, and I think Dr. Sullivan just noted this, there's also the potential for our, the district's ability to actually make some revenue from hosting non-district students, you know, whose district does not provide the services. And then they come to Cohasset and pay the out-of-district tuition to Cohasset. So now, it's the reverse. Not only are we not paying the out-of-district tuition, we're also making the out-of-district tuition dollars from other districts. And I'm not trying to turn it into a business, but what I'm trying to do is, we can actually turn a negative number into a positive number. And that can actually help us to expand the program in years to come. So it's, although the economics might not be there initially, or it might be a break-even proposition, or maybe even a little bit in the red, it may be worth it to do it if we're able to build out that program in the long term and draw students from outside the district to our district. It may be, that may be a consideration as well. And so I'm just pointing that out. I also saw that Ms. Stefan must be watching, and she had raised her hand. I don't know if she's commented or anything like that, but I did see.
I don't miss, obviously, if Ms. Stefan has a question, definitely ask it. I think she just raised her hand. Sometimes it's, I know from being on these.
That's fine.
I'm not saying that's it. That's what I.
Ms. Stefan, if you're watching, you want to comment, just use Zoom because Facebook is down, and you wouldn't be able to comment through Facebook anyway. But, but use the Q and A feature on Zoom, and you know how to do it. You've been a member of the committee. So just wanted to make sure you knew that we saw that in the event that it was potential and not unpotential. All right, thank you. That's the only point I want to make.
One of the things.
Yes, Mr. McClellan, I do understand that, and I hear what you're saying. It's important when we are building that, however, probably for it to be self-sustaining first, you know, with students who are currently in our district and then continue to grow that.
Yeah, one of the really good points that I know that Ms. Swonka stresses, and I think she's right on, is in a small district, in any district, but particularly a small district, you need to build flexibility, and you need to build capacity within your, and that's what we're talking about, I know that. But really, to make sure that our, because, you know, you can have, you may not have the depth of programming to handle every particular student that comes in, but you want to be able to be nimble and flexible with your staff to provide what those students need. So there's a lot of that happening too. I know Barbara, as we, and I think that's, you know, you made that point about looking at, you know, your, the needs of your students coming in, is the profile changing? And do we need to be more nimble and flexible with our staffing and our training to help them? So that's really, it's a unique situation when you have a small district to be flexible. You know, you, easy to do in a bigger district.
So I guess, anything else from the committee members? Ms. Leslie?
Sorry.
No, please.
So I was just doing a little bit of math, and it seems like actually while the overall student population has changed and the percentages have changed, that the actual, like, number of students in each category has remained relatively static. So I'm seeing four students across the board in residential programs for these four years. I'm seeing a drop from seven to four and then back up to five in private, which sort of makes me wonder just about, well, what makes me wonder about a couple of things? But one of them is just sort of, when we're talking about identifying children earlier through the pre-K program, providing services at an earlier time, whether or not that, those opportunities are remedial or as to the discussion that we were just having, whether or not investing more money there would be sort of prophylactic in terms of taking vulnerable students and providing them with services very, very early in their career and really putting the energy towards sort of hyper-early identification intervention. And then a sort of a secondary question, just while I have the floor. It seemed to me from your comments that private placement was due solely to emotional or behavioral/mental health challenges. But I'm wondering too if that also includes language-based learning disabilities or other such learning disabilities who, where a student may need placement otherwise, because I think that we do provide some of those services at the school, but we certainly, in my understanding, have students who are leaving the district to receive different kind of language-based instruction.
So I certainly didn't mean to imply that it was the only area. It was the area in which we could put some of our resources to retain our students. And that disability area was one that we could address and was disproportionate in the sense that it was an area in which we could put some energy and some focus and really develop out, you know, what we needed to do to be able to support students here in the district in that instead. Certainly, there are, you know, a vast amount of reasons and disability areas why students go out to all kinds of placements, and that is not the sole one. I'm very cautious of providing percentages to you rather than numbers and not being, you know, overly, I don't want to say transparent, but divulgent with information about, you know, parents' children because we are so small.
And I do have a comment that Barbara Stump did just say, I'm all set, just a reminder about student confidentiality and cohort numbers. So that's just exactly what Ms. Swonka was saying.
Which is correct. Anything else? Ms. Swonka, you can stop sharing your screen now. Very much appreciate the. I guess going forward, to underscore the purpose of this agenda item, and also as Mr. McClellan raised, you know, this is just something, and it sounds like you are obviously looking at program building as a priority. And, you know, let's continue to keep our eyes on the tipping point where it may become prudent for us to do our own investment. And then I also want to underscore Ms. Leslie's suggestion as well, if there are ways where we can, you know, potentially reduce that overall number from 24 to 18 through hyper-early intervention coming out of our pre-K program, which also sounds like you're already on. I think that that's, that's, that's a great directive as well. So again, thank you very much for that, and.
I don't know if there's anything else from Mrs. Owen on this.
I think Ms. Owen was on the economic side of it, but I think we've covered that. So thank you both.
Thank you, Barbara. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night. See you tomorrow.
Coming up now, I think Dr. Sullivan, I'll turn it over to you. This was an agenda item that had been tabled from our last meeting.
Yes.
On participation rates. And Mr. Kearney, this is a, this is in response to a specific request you had made for. This is in response to a specific request you had made for a future agenda item. I'll like note that uh here it is, we're we're using our future agenda items. You asked, you received.
And I should mention um to Mr. Kenny and Mr. Kenny, I'd be glad to share uh winter um. Participation rates when, you know, when they're put in time. This, of course, is um the fall, but you can see how our how our students. Yeah, what I think this shows is a um, I hope it shows is a growing. When I'm there yet, but a growing um sort of breadth of activities that we have at every level. So this starts with high school and kind of goes goes down, but you can see um our acapella group, our arts magazine, our club. We have a newly formed Black Student Union, which is is um thriving and um doing uh well, as you know, goal of um. Uh, Ms. Kittens, Carol, Mr. Lisa, uh, our MEKO director to help work with that, but. All of our staff, really, it's a it's a great, a great program, chess club, comics club. Um, debate team, diversity club, Dungeons and Dragons club, entrepreneur club, film club, French club, green team.
Yeah.
I'm not reading them all.
We can, we can take it as read. I I think. No, no, no. You could not, that would be ideal. I I will, I will jump to the to the punchline. I think what I'm most impressed with, having, we saw this in our prior, and so I have been prepared. Is not only the number of decimals that you uh calculate that ratio out, but also if you'll go back up. We have uh total enrollment in activities, if I'm doing the math right, nine hundred ninety four, which exceeds our total enrollment by. Two point three seven times, meaning that the average student would be in a in two point three seven activities.
That's great.
Um, are, if you want to take it out to the tenth, that's well, two point three seven, two, three, one, five, oh, three, five, and I'm going to read all these numbers, seven, nine, nine. But two, um, so anyway, this is a very engaged student body, it seems.
And and I think it's growing over the years here, middle school, extracurricular activities. It's great. We can have these years ago. Is there um, is there any way, I guess, can we open up the floor?
Absolutely, unless there's um, I think there may be another page.
Okay. Well, yeah, this is Deer Hill. I just want to, should I just go through it quickly? Yeah. I know you've you've probably viewed it and you've heard it, but I I love these activities, some really neat ones, yeah. And I was good. I'm not sure what Daisy's is, you know.
Oh, it's um, it's before brownies.
Before brownies.
First one.
Oh, wow. Hello, I missed, I missed that one. What'd you say?
I said, you want a Daisy?
I have a daughter, I should have a Daisy. I, she wasn't Daisy, but. No, I was not, so, um, boys suck, we get, I got the sports. Volleyball's really picked up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Meteoric rise of participation there. That was a, a huge boom in the district.
There we go.
Yeah.
So.
Great. Not surprised that that's worse than.
So uh this went all over the floor and Mr. Kenny, I know you had the.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the chair for bringing this up. Yeah, it's nice to be heard. Um, I, you know, it's it's funny because it's like. Yes, I I don't think there's ever really, I talk about like how everybody's part of that, right? Like, I never knew. The debate team, like, that was such a, like, a good thing for me to say, great, cross country, never thought of cars country. I'm a big cross country fan. My son, it loves it, so. I think there's um, you know, when you think about school, you think about sports, you think about football, and and to see this is 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 incredible. Um, you know, I heard this talk about a baking club.
Yes.
And uh my son's really interested in that. He's a great baker. Um, so like, I I I just wish we could maybe um. You know, send that out once in a while. Did you know, the kind of a question mark, I've always seen like, and and. This will get into some of the communication part that we'll we'll bring in from the finance, why it's important to have TVs around so that we could advertise. To these clubs, like, I I would see like a big question mark and say, did you sign up for something?
Right.
You know, because that's all parents are looking for. You know, I didn't know there's an investment club. Sign me up. I mean, that's, you know. Our critical life is coming in February. Yeah, I mean, there's so many things going on and I, and you know, again, I I speak to the fact that I'm sitting here so lucky to be on this committee. And so blessed to be here, to be advised of all these things. I just think that I'd love more parents to know that there are. So like, if you have a child that is sitting around and you, he's on social media too much and he doesn't want to play a sport, chess club. I love your idea of posting it around places a little more. I will say, I know that all the. Big, and I'll just put a pitch for the individual school newsletters because this is put out there. Um, in in that and that, it just know it's, if you're looking to try to have those conversations with your student. You know, that's a good place to point them. Let's take a look at the newsletter. Did you know there's this? Because they are putting. Right, so that's just by way of a good connector for parents, because you're right on. Right, so keep them busy, that's my.
And another thought, uh, Mr. Kenny, um, brought this idea in my head. Um, investment club, this town is filled with people who are professional investors. This would be a great way through all these various clubs to, you know, get some of that parental involvement. Perhaps there's a a parent who's an investor and she's a portfolio manager. You can kind of talk to the club, you know, so, you know, we've all talked about trying to tap into the resources of our of our town, so it's a, you know, have letting these clubs know that they can access. So how.
That's the, that's that authentic learning is that's, that's a deeper, we are doing that in places, but your point is right on. We need to do more. I know Mr. Collin himself is. I've been helped with a mock trial.
Yeah, and finishing it tomorrow, first period.
That's right, so it's, but your point is right on the money, and that's another place the strategic plan needs to go, yeah. Yeah, also too, to your point about that, it's 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 like, I had the opportunity to basically judge a debate club. And I thought that was such a great thing to do, and, you know, I was asked to do it, so like. I think those are the things where parents can get more engaged, to your point about being an investment banker, you know, if you'd like to play chess and you want to. Teach kids to play chess, I mean, there's there's so many opportunities, and again, thank you, Greg, for uh for all you do for the school, because. Um, like, like.
We all, we're all sitting here.
No, I know that, no, but you mentioned, you mentioned uh bringing it, and you know, my my daughters were part of a class that you had brought in that. Again, you know, we bring something new, Dr. Sullivan, we do it, and that was one of the things to recognize and.
Great, yeah. Oh, y'all call it.
Yeah.
This is, this is kind of links back to, I I know I used all my talk, that's up already, the digital system thing, but but I. This goes back to our trying to create a community resource book with all the parents or or family members and what they do and people that be vol- willing to volunteer and then distributing it to the staff. So they know, that was, I I, that was a goal of the school committee, we just sort of didn't.
We've talked about that, and and even like, as we develop our new website, because we are doing a new website format.
Yeah.
Have a community resource.
I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna take care of it.
This is a, this is a big one, and it, and it, you know, this is when, you know, vendors who we approve. Can't can't put information on there. Um, right now, I don't share that information in my newsletter or any newsletters. But it it is no place for me to direct them.
Community bulletin board with resources, donation button.
Yeah, that was great, yeah. That's it, community resource page is a big, big idea that we can do.
Yeah.
I love that, this this could also be something if we are, we're dusting off that communications and public relations subcommittee. This could also be an agenda item there, that we're gonna do something pretty big about digital literacy, so.
Right, the whole strategic plan.
Yeah. Excellent, so thank you very much, Dr. Sullivan. Um, we'll close off Agenda Block E and go to our favorite agenda block that starts with an F. Uh, Agenda Block F, Budget Resources and Governance.
F is your favorite.
F is for favorite, um, and it's our favorite primarily today because we are accepting a gift.
We are.
So.
Isn't F for fast?
I know, not today, it's not.
F is for freezing.
Well.
For finance.
So there are, there is materials, F one, agenda item F one, and the materials, the materials.
So we just want to thank um and accept the gift from the Cohast Education Foundation.
Yes.
They um donated a check to us for twenty three thousand five hundred fifty four dollars and fifty five cents.
I will share the amazing activities that we have.
Activities, bench benches and picnic tables, as you can see, ADHD professional development. CL pass curriculum, high school code curriculum, EF print printed agendas. Narrow science elective course and D and D supplies. Do you know what D and D?
Yeah, that's Dungeons and Dragons. So we were, remember, all of these uh items that are funded by our CEF come through applications that are submitted by our staff. And they review them and they're very um. I I think you have a very good uh process for determining what indeed is a uh. I- i- is a need that they can fulfill, and they they're they're very respectful and they try to try to accommodate everything. They have conversations with Dr. Scollins and. Uh, I come in when needed, uh, and we're just incredibly thankful for our CEF. They're a great educational foundation. And I'm really happy that these um, these amazing educators put uh these these grants in and they're able to be funded. Um, in this cycle.
Well, there's a a little bit of a administrative item. We do have to vote to accept.
You do.
The the jack, so it's not funded yet. Second motion made by Mr. Collin, seconded by Mr. Kenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, so we uh thank you very much, CEF, for your continued support of our schools and our students, and this, these are great. Um, initiatives, so very much appreciate the gift. Um, and I will move on to budget and finance with uh our Director of Finance and Operations, Ms. Susan Owen.
This is our monthly update. Excuse me, FY twenty four November, finance report. Um, today, our budget is forty point seven one percent expended and we have forty one point six seven percent through the year. So we're we're pretty much right on target, um, a little bit ahead of the game. You know, we've uncovered supplies, materials, it's. You know, we still have remaining balance, thirteen million to continue us through the remainder of the year. Um, it's just, you know, month to month. The expenses go up, the remaining goes down. Um, the the next item is the spent tuitions, which we've been following. So uh unfortunately, last month, our spread tuition went down a little bit, our deficit, and this um, this month it has gone up. Um, we had a new student move into the district and had to be placed in a collaborative um accomplishment, so. Um, our deficit went from four hundred seventy three thousand to five hundred forty four. Um, so again, we're we're watching that, because you can see, you know, so so Mr. Walker's looking at programming and and what we can do to bring um students back. Um, I did reach out to the town just to see, put it on their radar that we may or may not be asking for money from the spread stabilization fund. To help offset this deficit. Um, we're just going to follow it for the next few months and see what happens. Utilities, again, um, higher than they were last year, both electric and gas have increased compared to last year, you know, some of it's based on cost. Some of it is based on usage, um, you can see, we elected this year, uh, we spent two hundred eight thousand compared to one hundred fifty five here. And the same with gas, um, we spent twenty six thousand this year compared to eighteen thousand last year. Um, you'll see in in my FY twenty five budget, um, draft, we're look, we're looking to increase. Uh, utility um budget in our special education.
Can I have a question about um utilities?
Sure.
Are there like associations of schools that buy utilities differently? Do you buy directly or in some sort of?
We group with the town.
Group with the town.
So they do contract with different, different companies, different third parties, um, in lock-in rates. Here's just a breakdown of each school, uh, and what their budget was, what they've expended, what they've covered, what they're, um, what their balances are, you can see. Um, most of them are under, um, I know, under budget to date, and then the last column is FTEs, which is a full-time equipment, which tells you how many staff are in each building. Super Brady has changed, Danny, that's that's a lock-in number. Uh, with capital, um, for the current year, and then we have a draft capital list. Here, which we'll talk about in more depth, um, in one of the next items, but these are, this is the request, um. For our capital items to draft, obviously, this, you'll see Cs and Ss, ones for our regular capital, one for stabilization fund. Um, we'll go into more detail.
Another item that the uh. I know we were, maybe we're not doing that through the capital, the uh gate between at the top of the pathway at Osgood.
Pleasant Street.
Yeah, we were.
So the facilities, I I talked to facilities, fire department, and they they went down there and they put a padlock on it. That's how they solved it.
Okay, we just need to follow that up with you quickly.
Um, and it taught you a special town um election, a new school special purpose implementation fund is Pat, five district. Um, for next year or this current year, one point five million, one that we can pay for the partner pay as a minimum project. Just wanted to thank community for all their support um in getting that passed. Our our grants, you can see they're they're pretty similar from year to year, the the ones. In yellow highlight are new to us this year. You know, not not big ticket items, but it's a little bit of finance helps um with the different programs. And the furthest comment over column, I'm sorry, but it will give you what we what we received in FY twenty three um versus what we received this year. Grants fund about twelve point four additional staff. And then our revolving funds, we have worked diligently to bring down those balances, um, they were quite high. So you can see here, most of our balances are um under a hundred thousand. We have the school kindergarten. It it says it's minus seventy eight thousand, it it's not technically, um, the school does not have access to the three hundred thousand. It's a, it's an account on the town side, um, so we're tracking it here through the revolving account, and then they'll make a transfer at the end of the year to three hundred thousand. School facilities, um, that that deficit is going down slowly, but it's going down. And you can see, um, same with school lunch, we had a very high balance in school lunch. Um, la- last yearly before we we did a lot of upgrades to our cafeteria, and now that we have um a new food service director, Vinny. Um, we're definitely looking at some new equipment, new freezers, refrigerators, um, all kinds of, all kinds of items.
And, Miss Owen, the the receipts here, is that for sales of school lunches to students, two hundred forty four thousand?
That. A receipt, those are our reimbursement from the, those, the combination of, um, lunches paid for whatever, so allocate items. Um, and then federal and state reimbursement.
Breaking it in.
Yeah, um, would that, would that go up at all?
The two forty four?
Yeah.
Yeah, we get, we get reimbursed every month.
Oh, every month, so every month.
Every month, that number will change.
Okay, cool, because three eighteen would, three sixty would be going up, so.
Correct, so this is based on November, um, so for the month of December, we'll get. Um, probably in a little, sixty to a hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement again.
Is that about every month you get sixty?
It's, it it's pretty much the same, I mean, some months are a little bit less.
Okay.
And the revolving accounts, um, fund approximately twenty five point seven personnel, so definitely helpful. And I just have, you know, same items, how the school budget's broken down, how many FTEs headcount. We currently have two hundred and twenty seven point one FTEs. Then we talk about just breaking down regular education, special education and undistributed. And then this, this gives you um staffing by school and their FTEs and how they're funded either by budget or by grant involving. So it will give you the FTEs each. Middle and high, same thing. Here's summary of our November, uh, electric. We can see, you know, what, two hundred eight this year versus the one fifty five last year. Same thing with gas, which twenty six versus eighteen. This is the breakdown of grant, the grants and how many FTEs are funded, um, to which grants. The biggest one would be our uh special education, um, two forty grant. Sports, nine point four FTEs. Sports, nine point four FTEs. And then this, like, revolving account, we have to use. And then we get into the enrollment numbers. Each month I'm, I'm updating and then I'm giving a summary.
Can you go back to that just a little? There's a big class that I'm trying to figure out where that was.
Well, the second grade, second grade, but we've been really helping out the current third grade. Moving into fourth grade, but remember that was also a huge concern of ours coming out of COVID. That group was the group that was really, um, on the cusp of, uh, meeting, uh, in early university. And, uh, we just wanted to make sure we provided them as much support in, uh, in teacher help as possible. Felt they could use more, smaller structure.
So food services, quick update. We're excited to announce that we, you know, we have, we hired Vinny Codon, Vinicio Codon as a food service director. He's been with us for several weeks now. We've heard great positive feedback.
Yeah, and you know what? Their, their work was exceptional during the, um, the storm. Because we had to move to get, uh, food for our Osgood students without a significant delay. Because the, uh, lack of generator there put us in a little bit of problem. And they snapped action, got a hot lunch for minutes to let.
And I, and I can just tell you, my, my kids, they love it. It's been such a blessing hearing from other parents that, oh, what do we have in today? You know, and, and we've, we've always talked about like starting it here and hopefully it'll, other towns will start to see there. Bringing good food is, and, and especially Ted, you've always brought up like, how can we help other districts? Hopefully they won't try to steal our chef. But that said, I, I'm hoping that other districts follow suit to what we're doing. And seeing that bringing good food in, right? I just can't wait to like really dial down, ordering food and making sure that goes there. Because, you know, if you look at it too, kids, some kids might go to school just to eat, you know, and, and on the district. So if they can learn from us, I, I'd love to see this expand to other districts. So I, I'm just so proud of everybody that participated in that.
Yes, and I know we, we had a meeting, um, tentatively scheduled, was it this week?
With the kids, right?
With the kids, with the kids, but we had to.
We're gonna, we're gonna do that in January.
Yeah, yeah. Just. But I know at, down at Deer Hill, they have, um, they have had a meeting.
Yep, yeah, Mr. Codon met with the Deer Hill students to hear that.
See what they, yeah. See what they have to say.
So doing it all over.
Moving on to transportation, work has started with the charging station for the new electric bus. As soon as that charging station is done, the bus is waiting in Boston for us to receive it. So we'll put that to good use. And again, at this point in school year, we've got the normal concerns for utilities and special education questions. Um, things are progressing. Based on projections, if there's any question.
Any questions for Ms. Owen on the budget? Uh, this is the, you'll never report.
Utility, uh, costs, is that mostly rates or is there anything inefficient that we're looking at?
Most of it's rate, most of it's rate.
Thanks.
Excellent. Uh, thank you, Ms. Owen, for that, for our monthly update. Now I think we're going to look at a preliminary FY twenty-five, um, budget.
Very preliminary. Um, we have met as a leadership team.
We've met several times.
Multiple times, um.
It's a collaborative process. So we meet at least three or four times a year to look at, uh, data and to look at our requests. And at this stage, everything is on the, everything you're going to see is on the table here. We haven't started to truly go through any process of, uh, whittling down based on whatever may be coming our way. We're just giving you, you know, the, the, these are the cold hard facts of what we feel we really need.
The rough draft.
It's a rough draft. It's good way to put it. And I think we're going to talk, we'd like to next meeting, talk about this in a workshop.
In a workshop with the.
With the school committee.
In the principal.
Cause then we can really talk about some of our thoughts and, but we, but we're committed to always showing people what we need. Yeah. Because if you don't show that, people don't realize we need it.
Which really aren't a lot of asks. Um, unfortunately, our rollover costs, it's the, the third year of most of our contracts, the highest percent. So you can see that the rollover cost, um, a little over a million dollars, which is already over, you know, two, three percent increase. We also had an increase in circuit breaker. So we said make up the difference to a hundred and thirty-six thousand. We've talked about that. We have an increase of four hundred and four thousand in special tuitions. Cause we've had five, um, students move into the district or transfer from collaborative to residential. And then, you know, a normal hundred and eighty thousand projections and retirement savings. And then you get into the staffing requests. Um, so this is, as Dr. Sullivan said, this is everything that we're looking for. We had projections for the next five years. So you can see, um, there's a, there's a request to increase our OT from point eight to one point oh at the middle of the high school. Grade four. Deer Hill enrollment, um, we've been following that. We may, um, if you see, look over to the, the left here, uh, move priorities by need. If we do not increase the grade four, the cohort, the, the group of kids will be about twenty-two. If we do increase, it will be about eighteen in the class, class size. So twenty-two was where they're at now.
So you can see that, uh, we've also crossed out some items. We still, we still would like to do that, but we're also be, trying to be a little bit practical. So you're kind of seeing our, our workings here, like for instance, the point two oh increase of the OT. We, we think we might be able to find that from another source. And then you can see the prioritization. The reason those are stricken is that we're, our, our approach here was to make sure we have a certified technology teacher. Um, teaching technology. And I remember the, the, uh, the, the folks who came today are our instructional technology specialists. So they're coaches and, 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 uh, they instruct, as you can saw, Lindsay does some teaching. But we also have people who are teaching these classes who right now are amazing, but they're not certified. We've encouraged them to get certified in technology. The district deserves a certified technology teacher at, in front of our kids at all levels. So that was in a, we, we, we thought we want it, but we wanted to keep it on the sheet. But we also think we could possibly hold off on that another year. Because we do think we're getting a good product from our, our current staff, knowing that they're also being trained simultaneously.
So that's, so those are not.
They're not an ask right now.
And they're not ads that we need because we're, we don't have the resource, the certification.
It's a certification thing. So we took those off our ask, but we wanted you to see them. We do want that down the road.
Yes, we're looking for a social worker, um, for the elementary level. Social worker adjustment counselor to increase what we have at the elementary level. Right now, we have some who split between two.
We have one, right, so.
This one, one at one school and one at the other.
And we're seeing a higher level of need, right?
We are, and so that would support, um, those younger students, those kindergarten and first grade we're seeing. Or just kind of those behavior pieces that we want to help students regulate so that they're able to access the curriculum. And so being able to have a, a full-time social worker or adjustment counselor at each school, um, would be extremely helpful in managing those. Cause we do have an escalation of behaviors.
And really target our, our, our support, as you can imagine, the scheduling and moving back and forth. And if things are going on, you have, have something happening in one area and other, it can be, it can be quite difficult. So it's, it's a good use of, uh, data points towards it. We can talk about that at the workshop.
There was a request for, um, a special education teacher at kindergarten level. So in Osgood, the other two levels have a dedicated special education teacher. The kindergarten does not. And this goes back to what Ms. Loco was saying, we have, we start really, really early to identify, um, needs. Uh, we may be able to keep some of our students, uh, in-house.
And is the, is the special education, you know, I'm, I was hoping it was a kind teacher you were looking for, but I guess kindergarten. They're, they're always kind. Um, will this be a teacher that helps in, I guess, keep with, what was the difference? Is it a teacher and then like someone who does the assessments? Are they the same, is that the same people?
Assessments are, uh, no assessments are done, uh, not by our special education teachers, but it would be a special education teacher dedicated to kindergarten. We have, right now, we have a kindergarten and first grade special education teacher. And then a dedicated special education teacher for second, one for third, one for fourth, one for fifth. The feeling is if we could have one for kindergarten and separate it out, so you'd have a K, excuse me, I'm sorry. Dedicated for kindergarten, dedicated for first grade, um, that would support in class. It would be simple out, depending on what the students needs are. Uh, but the most support we can give students within, um, the classroom setting at an earlier age will allow us to be able to, um, give them more opportunity for growth and to, uh, just.
And the reason we prioritize that at number three is just the data point. It's just how many students will be impacted. And if you compare that to number two, which is our social worker adjustment counselor. We felt that more students would be impacted positively by the addition of that based on our data. But we can talk about that at the workshop.
And we've thrown in our preschool, so we're not, you know, so we're not looking at all those pieces too. That's the other thing coming in. So, simple.
Well, this is first read, right?
You guys.
Um, and you could see the quest and we put it, it's our first request is to increase our E L, um, or ESL teacher from one point five to one point oh.
E L, E L teacher.
We only have one point five.
Right, and, and within the past.
English learner, English language learner.
And you're just going to start to see, it's actually been changed to multiple language learners. I guess you're going to actually see M L, um, as we move forward. Excuse me. Um, but, um, although we are not as impacted as other districts are, um, we, we had, um, I believe two students move in last week and plus, and then I believe another student prior. So we almost, we double earned a person. Which our numbers are relatively low compared to others. It doesn't matter. We still are required.
And then, sure, and there are some unique challenges that happen and, uh, to staff when you don't have E L often. But you have, we have, we're required and we want to help the student appropriately. There's, there's a lot of coaching that has to go on there. And we, we really, the, the demands of just a few more students.
It's a lot.
Is going to up the, the need for this. This is, this is kind of, it's going to happen and we need to. That's why it's number one.
It absolutely, and these students are coming in, um, with, um, little to no English at all. So, uh, it's been a shift over the past few years, our asset, our, our population. Speed.
And then, as I mentioned, uh, I added in an increase to the utilities budget, an increase to the custodial supplies and materials budget. Because, um, custodial supplies materials have, have requested grown, um, quite a bit. Consider, you know, considering we're now doing all the landscaping, so that's an added piece, but we haven't added to that, to that budget. Um, collaboratively between all the department heads, um, forty-four thousand, increase in supplies and materials to include some textbooks.
That's lower than last year significantly. If you remember, we had a one-time expense.
Two hundred and seventy-two.
Yeah, well, yes, and, and now our curriculum review cycle is, is starting to spin. So you're starting to see, it should be lesser amounts spread out.
And then the three hundred thousand dollar, um, I want it, I, you know, I want it, there's, there's a, um, that went on chapter seventy increases.
We should get a portion.
The allotment to the schools should see, um, the addition that comes from the full one.
It's really important that we keep that front center, particularly as we're shifting leaderships at both levels, town. And that, that, that was something that, you know, should come from chapter seventy, which again goes to the town.
Right.
And we should get our portion of chapter seventy to fill in that promised amount. Yeah, it's very important.
The issue is we have, we, we have to, we have to pay for all the stuff and it's, it's got to come from the town no matter what.
So I know, but, but this is chapter seventy money that we, we dedicated to. Yeah, I, I didn't mean that in any other way than that.
So, I mean, if you look at the bottom, at the, the bottom line, um, what's an eight point eight two percent increase?
That includes that three hundred thousand.
And that includes, that includes everything. So it's a, it's a little bit, about two, two million dollars, um, increase. So we definitely have some work to do, but this is very, very broad preliminary, um, of what our request is. We have, you know, we have talked about, um, getting, getting together with leadership team and, um, putting together the not so nice list.
Yeah, we're doing that. That's an exercise that we're doing as well, but we're not putting that here. But, but anyway, we're, you know, we obviously have a, have a, have a duty to, to help our current staff to make sure that we're doing right by them. That, that, that goes without saying. But we are, how we can, what we can do without, without actually doing anything with, uh, certain, trying to fix problems. So that's, that's really, that's about, it's not about cutting positions necessarily. It's about fixing problems.
So, um, this is, this is great. This is just first read. We'll have an opportunity to work, work with you on this. I mean, I'm sure we have, uh, comments, I've put in as the time. Uh, but anyone else report, any immediate reactions from the committee on the budget list? As proposed?
It's a great draft.
Very numb. Well, um, we will, uh, move on to, I guess, uh, twenty-five capital update provisions to priorities. And that's, I believe, the document, level draft capitalist. Is this you, Ms. Owen?
This is me.
Okay.
Sorry.
No worries.
Taking it all in. Uh, so this is the FY twenty-five draft capitalist. We did meet as a subcommittee, um, and we extended that out to, um, the facilities department, the assistant town manager. And then Ellen Ma, who is the liaison. So we could get a, a better feel of, of the stabilization, the capital stabilization fund, um, and get clarity on who, who is deciding and what we would decide on. So the, the, let us see, this is our regular capital. And some of it is just year to year, our bus leases, the electric bus, the replacement of chrome bricks. The, you know, the projections, um.
Replacement project, yeah.
For replacing the projectors. Um, so last year we did the middle school. And this year we're asking for high school. Um, middle school's asking for the enhanced audio, which you can see, um, finished retiring at Deer Hill, replacing the furniture. And then you get down, um, to the bottom where you see the Ss. So, um, the primary, most important was the fire alarm system. After talking to facilities, um, the number went up to a million or more. So he was going to get back to us on.
We don't like, yeah, he was going to get back to us and we didn't know if that was going to be more or less, because they can use the, what we have. If we need to go through the whole system, it would be a million, but we need to see what we can use. So that's kind of been messing us up a little bit too. Cause it's such a, a important part of it. But if you would have, we talked about like being able to like, uh, either bond that out or, cause it really, it take, it's that one swoop puts us at two point nine as opposed to, if we were at one point nine, right? We usually get about a half a million from the town. So if, 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 if you take that off, then we have the stabilization plus, plus, plus. And also too, the AC is not even on, air conditioning is not even on that.
So do we adjust this from our conversation? Cause we talked about putting some money aside for.
No, this hasn't been, this hasn't been adjusted since that meeting.
It hasn't.
No, but that's not.
So this doesn't, this doesn't, uh, okay.
Right, so we. It, it's definitely a work in progress, um, cause we talked about, um, with, with the roofs. We know we can't do a roof in one year, um, based on the stabilization fund. But we could maybe do something off this list and then put a dollar amount of five hundred thousand, um, or so aside and hold it for a roof at Osgood. And then next year we could add another five and show we could get to the point of, um, fully supporting the cost of roofs.
Well, yeah, also the, the fire alarm, I mean, so one thing we talked about is getting true pricings for these items.
Yes.
Right. And, and the truth, those, those numbers don't necessarily reflect true pricing. For instance, the million dollar fire alarm.
Right.
Was, that's very fuzzy. That was adjusted.
It was much less before until we talked.
Well, yeah, but I, but it's fuzzy.
Well, yeah, but I, but it's fuss. So I guess my point is, this is just a low, I wouldn't worry about the numbers so much right now. And looking at this list, I think this list more represents what some of the items are that are our priorities.
Right.
Because we really have to get true numbers. That was the first thing we talked about. And then we also talked about the idea of putting away some money. And this goes to sort of Mr. Carr's idea of not necessarily spending the whole one point five allocation right away.
Right.
But putting some money aside within that, within that amount, whether it's goes up to one point five or is less. And then take care of a lot of items and then the next year would be a little bit more put aside for. Roofs, because we'd have less items to take, take care of. And then the next year it might be, if we got another, it could be a, a full investment in the roofs. So the idea would be a progression of money that we could really advocate for to the town as a plan to, to be ready. When indeed we are putting in a new roof and then the next roof will be, I would imagine, Osgood. Because that's our, our most needy of the roofs.
Right.
And we still have a workshop coming.
Absolutely.
So this is very preliminary.
We can all dial in.
The capital figures look fairly accurate. I mean.
Capital figures.
Can you do subtitles, subtotals on these so that, because first of all, I thought. Miss K, you're saying we get usually a half a million in capital. I thought we were around like seven fifty, eight hundred.
Some years, some years we have, but mostly, mostly it's about a half a million, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. That's why I'd like to be honest with you guys, like, that's why we gotta really dial down on workshop. Because if like, we're talking about putting, we have fifty thousand dollars in there for communication, being TVs and all, all the. All, all the areas so that we can communicate messaging and try to put a sign out front. Tell people superintendent meeting tonight, whatever we're trying to do. We've been asking for that for the last five years. So like, to be honest, like, we put it in as capital. I almost wanna switch the capital to the stabilization fund because it's like. Hey, you know, every time you go to ask for that, you don't, we just don't get it. So like.
There's, there's limits on the, the stabilization fund's really only about significant capital expenses on like facilities. So.
So you add them up.
I think, I, I think though, as we, as we get those major. Big job. I hear you, but yeah, because if we say to them like, the major stuff is one point five. Really, they're gonna give us five hundred thousand. That's what we usually get. And I think that's where we gotta dial down on like with, with, with getting the communication messages in there and letting them know. Why we need this because it's been like every year.
Well, we have that one point five and we know if we get the big items there.
Right.
That will help us.
Right.
Get some of those other items.
Right.
Because we'll take care of the big items.
Right.
But I do think we have to have a strategy for saving for the biggest item, which is the roofs. And, and, and the other big ones, windows, roofs, windows, both, both buildings, Deer Hill, and, you know, there's more to learn on all those things.
But I, I agree, we, we, we have to attend to the needs. And we can't just keep saying we need it. We got some money. We got to care some of them.
To be honest with you, there's no money in there and I've been talking about it, like it, the bathrooms in the middle school, the high school. And, and.
We haven't even got to that level yet.
We haven't even got to that level. Electricity of like, we have lights that don't work, like. So like, I, I would like to see when we talk about the workshop is to say, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for fit, fixing the electrical. And having a hundred thousand in there and just go and have an electrician company come in and, and analyze what we have and fix it.
Believe it, like the air conditioning, we've talked about that.
There might be some overlap there.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's what I was gonna say, yeah. Like that will take care of our air conditioning. I, I would imagine.
Yeah.
The feasibility study would really help us in getting an actual estimate.
Right.
Not just a, an overarching estimate for things like an air conditioning needs.
Yeah. So, so what's the, so we, we see this purpose, what's the, what's the next plan for this and what do you need from this committee at this point?
Probably the work, I, I would say on our next meeting, we're gonna, we're gonna talk budget.
And I think we gotta talk to DP, have conversations with DPW. And facilities to really try to hone down on some of these prices. We, we can't, you know, we're just going off of rough estimates. We really have to know. Particularly if, you know, these aren't on the deep, I'm looking at asphalt sidewalks and asphalt roads and they're not on the DPW's. Purview and they have a stabilization fund as well. I get it. They have a lot of other needs, but we really do need the pricings to be able to attend to that.
I'd also be curious, and I'm not sure where this information comes, that deferring any maintenance isn't causing additional expense. For example, leaving roofs that are leaking, are we then ending up? Needing to do interior renovations or repairs due to leaking roofs or windows or any of these little pieces? I'm thinking roofs and windows because those are big, but I think there are also sort of smaller things that just if the, if they, if these things fall off of that list in terms of repair. That they could end up costing us more in the long run.
Remember roofs are gonna go through the MSBA process too. And we're just hitting the age, right, at twenty-five years when our roof of Osgood will be considered solved.
And then solar, we might get the solar companies to pay. So there are, there definitely is conversations going on. Okay. So this is a work in progress. Any other questions for the crowd? I have a couple of points that I wanna make. I wanna give the other comments. So on my end, just a couple of the agenda items on the stabilization fund. The bus parking lot. That's a, from, in my perspective, the bus parking lot, I, I know we need it, but it's also an economic issue. So before we ask for the money, we need to know what the price is because if it's not worth it to do it.
Right.
Because it's cheaper to continue to lease, then we have a different decision to make. The other items on here.
Let me just, we did discuss that. We agree with that. We felt we should keep it on the list now because it's something considering, but I agree with you.
Yeah. And then the, the other items really, to me. Ourself, exactly, we had a speech on Monday, ourself mentioned. I, I do think for stability, but we do have a plan of how we're going to use this fund to attack the large items that are coming before we. Before we commit to any amounts out of that fund for other things. Because that's the story told to town when we asked for the money. So. Look forward to that workshop. Now, is the intent for the, the capital budget workshop and the. The budget workshop, the capital workshop, is it gonna be a dedicated meeting or is it gonna be in one of the school committee meetings? I guess what's the.
The workshop is, is usually scheduled for in the, it's a school committee.
It's a school committee.
Now, whether we have it at a, a different time and post it.
I think we should.
We, we, the past, we've had that in the community room, for instance, and we've had it, this is pre-COVID.
But it's dedicated to that purpose.
Right. And it's a separate meeting.
Yeah.
That's why if you looked at the, the budget calendar, we determined you needed this rough draft first.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't, because we have our calendar, we actually were gonna have that budget over today.
Yeah, we do.
So I, I would suggest after very, when Ms. Owen decides when it's appropriate, we get together during the day.
Yeah.
And have that conversation.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
I would say very early on.
Right. And also too, you know, we got a lot of little things that are on there, such as we've been talking about putting water fountains outside. That's been. We've had a gentleman in hand talking about that. So there, there are, there are things on there that we, we. Have to kind of consider too, again, with the, the sinks and the, and the. You know, these are common things. You go into the, if you were a student right now and you went into the middle school. You can't wash your hands, correct? It's just you gotta hold, I mean, those sinks need to be replaced. Or, you know, and, and it could be.
Yeah, ideally it would be.
A hand sensor and you could do hot water, cold water. So you can actually, this way you gotta try it, go in there and try to wash your hands.
Jerry, we had those sets of, they gave at least thirty seconds of water porridge, but. If that's not looked at all the time, it can't slide, so it can be inconsistent.
And it's just, it's just basically what it's down to. It's just not as good, not as efficient as having.
And we'll have those conversations. I'm gonna close this off just in the interest of time. It's very, very.
Yeah, no.
And this is all gonna be subject to a, to a workshop. So. And the next agenda item is a little meaty, I think. So next agenda, superintendent update. Our superintendent will be leaving us at the end of this year. So that's the, the update. The potential formation of the search committee, this is on here as potential because. We did not know our superintendent would be leaving us with certainty in, in the way we have certainty today. So some of us, hey, we, hey, because. So the process to replace superintendent is really important. So the idea that I think we would like to pitch to this group here is the formation of a search committee. And I think we'll probably actually request that to be on the agenda as a voted item for next meeting. But wanted to get some initial thoughts on the, from the group on the search committee and what the constitution would be. I know that Ms. Reckon and I have both, since we've worked closely with superintendent, would most like to volunteer to be on that search committee. And kind of help shepherd that process forward. But wanted to get some thoughts on, from the committee on, on how that search committee could be constituted. What the membership would look like and so on, and then we'll eventually vote on it at the next meeting. So with that, I'll open the floor.
So like, which stakeholders do we put on this? How many people in total? So I, you know, staff, faculty, principals, parents, what do we do?
I'm glad you brought this up because I looked at, I looked at what Marshfield does, did. And we can pretty much copy what they did. They had parents, they had, so I'll forward you the.
They used the M A, they used M A S C. So that's what maybe the first thing you decided, you're gonna use it outside and outside.
No, we use M A S C. I don't know why. We've done that. We've always used the executive search in the past. I don't know why we did that. That takes too much time. M A S C has a great resource. That's what most.
So I'll forward you, you guys, the, what I saw from there, because they just did it. So mine was just, and they had a parents, they had some parents on there. I mean, you know more than I do.
Very comprehensive.
Right? I mean, they.
It was a very comprehensive process. But I think that's the first choice is what do you, you, you do it internally or do you use outside?
So we should decide that as a group.
Yeah.
My personal position clear, but.
Or would that be a decision for the committee?
They'll help you with all of that.
I, 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 I don't know. I, I, I don't know. I guess, I guess it would be a, a, a decision for that subcommittee, I guess. I, I, I think it's a, it is a critical one.
Yeah.
Mr. Carr?
So I was on the search committee twice for superintendent here in Cohasset and it's exactly like that. We did have a union rep from the schools. We had a select person. We had an odd number. And I would call it being like nine. And it was something like that. And we did have a professional helping both. I don't remember who we used, but. We had a professional that we brought in and may have been that group of meetings, so they hired him.
And we did bring that group in when we hired Doc Selig.
Did, because we did.
Yeah. Yeah.
That wasn't M A S C, that was a different.
Two different groups.
I thought we had an independent.
That was an independent, that was an outside, and, and, and after a nationwide search, we landed on our assistant superintendent.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't.
Oh, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah. I mean, it's. I, M A S C has a huge amount of like experience in this. I think they're a really great resource. I, I'm. My, my, my number one thing is I'm worried. I just wanna make, this is a. It's a critical time to, to find candidates, right? Because people will be looking onward to the next academic year and I think that. Time is not our friend in this process. So, you know, we're learning this at the end of the calendar year. So, you know, like where Marshfield just did theirs for the next year at the end of their fall semester. We're behind the ball a little bit.
So I've done a head of school search, which is, it's sort of similar, but not, because it's not working within the same sort of bureaucratic constraints. But I think having multiple constituencies and even if the committee, the search committee itself is small, having. Opportunities for community voice. And even if that's a selective, smaller group, say a panel of parents selected by, by the subcommittee. That seems to allow for stakeholders to have, feel as if they're, they have some representation. Because I feel like the search committee I worked with was led by a search professional. But did include members of municipal administration, faculty, board of trustees. But then there were other times where, you know, a group of faculty would sit down with the search committee and the candidates to have conversations.
Typically have a, is M A S C, there's also a NASDAQ.
NASDAQ.
Right, there was a two big ones. Right now I'm on a search committee for the social education collaborative executive director. That's being run by NASDAQ. Vice president of that group, Representative Classit. So, and what they do is, it's, they're, all their processes, as you said, you're right on, are, are, and you are as well. They're, they're pretty well aligned where they, they, you know, get stakeholders, former committee. That's the screening committee. And then they do both a survey. To, to various stakeholders and then they do focus groups with, with stakeholders. So focus group of teachers, focus group of families, focus group of students. And they get information and they create what's called a candidate profile. And then they actually, they advertise appropriately. They screen for applications and then they go through the applications with the screening committee. They pick candidates who they wanna bring in for interviews. They create interview questions, of course, based on the profile candidate, candidate's profile. They have those interviews and then it all comes back to this committee. To determine, and the five of you determine who your next superintendent is. They're all kind of similar and it's just, you might wanna talk to them to get a sense of who you feel comfortable with. And then that will kind of lead you to, if you wanna use an outsider organization, who's appropriate to use for, for Cohasset.
Do they develop the position statement or is that something that? This group should probably start thinking about sooner rather than later.
Would you say job description?
Yeah.
That's developed with them typically. They, they, you lead, it's yours. You own it, right?
I asked Susan for that earlier.
Usually that happens at this, usually the, my experience is the school committee. Develops that with the person you choose and then you get the committee together and you kind of, it sort of simultaneously works.
In addition to duties, you would also create sort of a, a profile description. That's not, that includes personal characteristics as well.
Yeah. So I had asked, I haven't taken a look at it. It was my intention to have some sort of red line version done for the meeting today so that. I, it's tricky that the, you know, because of open meeting laws, in order, order for us to all participate, we either have to physically edit it at the meeting. Or kind of do it individually and then talk about it together at the meeting. So whichever way we should do, I, I don't know, maybe. What do you think?
I think we should put this on the agenda for next meeting, the position statement or the. The jobs for job district posting. In the interim, we could circulate it individually so people can see what we're starting from and we can come up with ideas. And adopt one that, I don't actually want to create the search committee. Okay. I'll send that to everyone right now. Any other thoughts?
It's probably Michael, here amount of time.
Let's, Dr. Sol, let's keep that in mind for our agenda planning that we're gonna, this, this will be a. Major component of that, of that meeting. Mr. Carr, you were on the committee. Did you find it to be particularly rewarding?
Yeah, very much. Really? Nope, it was good. It was on. It was on it twice because I, I was the select person.
Yeah.
And I got it on the second time because I was the select person that happened to be on it the first time. But I couldn't, I learned, I learned a lot and I thought having an outside person was excellent. Facilitator and the committee was good. I might suggest also we should see if. Maybe we consider C E F to have somebody on the committee. You know, like the stakeholders was very important to put all that together.
That could be.
Yeah.
That could be.
Very, very.
C E F.
I'm not homing tiering, but I. Thank you guys. Do a great job.
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a good thought for parental reps, is some, some P S O, C E F. Select board, some teachers, I think are, are input. So let's think about. What we, what that committee might wanna look like. And then we could be in touch individually, not as a group. In advance the next meeting. So we've got a good proposal worked out for that. Because as I shared Craig's concern, timing, we wanna make sure we get the. This. Uncertainty resolved as quick as possible. So. Any other thoughts? Concerns, worries on that score? Hearing none, we'll close off the superintendent update. Feasibility study update. We kind of caught a little bit of performance for Earl's, but is there anything else that, just recall from your perspective? Having a feasibility study. Food service. We did kind of touch on food service a little bit while we were in the budget, but Ms. Owen, anything on food service, the food service front?
No, other than, I know he just, he just became fully staffed. So now he's, and he's made some changes here at the middle high school that have been positive. And after the holiday break, he's gonna spend quality time down at the elementary school. Um, and after the holiday break, he's gonna spend, um, quality time down at the elementary school.
He'd like to get that senior cap.
And he's, he is working on the senior cap. I mean.
Just because space wise.
A lot of his balls in there, so senior cap, um, he's also looking at, and talk to me today about getting another cash, cash register.
Got a few spontaneous, um, community emails, just complimenting, out of the blue, how their, their students come home and said, yeah.
Right, we had one pair.
Amazing meal I had. I love the food.
One pair had three, 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 three total.
Yeah, just kind of nice to, the unsolicited.
Yeah.
Input.
Well, to be honest with you, like, I, my kids never ate the food. Now I don't have to feed the meals and.
It's so easy. Like, what'd you have this, you know, what'd you have? And they're excited to tell me. Okay, I'm excited to learn what you had, so.
All right.
Awesome.
So anything on the transportation fund?
No, no, I touched on that as well.
That's cool. Well, that's good.
Excellent. I'll close off our favorite agenda block F. Um, and now let's with the great agenda block G, community relations and community cases. Any reports from our subcommittees, our liaisons? Uh, I am the liaison to the middle school council, and our meeting was canceled because of the storm. So I have nothing to report, which is great because I was, I'm not gonna make it anyway. So uh, I'm getting my street, but, uh, I'm one I'm sure. No reports? There aren't topics not easily anticipated by the chair. I don't believe we have minutes to approve for this one.
Minutes.
Do we have any, we had, we had a few future agenda items we covered earlier in the meeting. Anyone want to, uh, underscore some other potential future agenda items?
Yeah, I had to. Um, one, I'd eventually like to talk about blockers in high school. And how we can utilize those blockers, stigma. Um, and the other one is, uh, thank you. Um, when people donate, I'd like to thank them, uh, with some kind of a letter from all of us. I just basically, it could be a form letter. So, um, I had donated some fitness equipment to my high school and I got one. So we can, that, I guess, I should use that.
Let's do that. I think that's, that's, that's low hanging fruit. Let's just, Killelagin school, whoever have, we'll all have our five signatures when we accept gifts. We'll sign the letter and send it on.
Yeah, Susan, we have to probably have that come from your office. It's a good idea. Thank you notes for donations.
You know, it's nice to get to come. I, and he can put it, it's just.
Home letter.
Yeah, and the other, we can personalize and you and I can sign.
Yeah.
Great idea. That's not even an agenda item. That's just done.
Yeah.
Um, there is no reason to go into executive sessions, uh, for this meeting. We will likely have an executive session for the next meeting. So keep that in mind as well. Uh, other than that, now it's my favorite agenda block, at least for this evening, agenda block I, adjourn. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Motion made by this person. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm screen to it.
Let's go. Let's go. So, uh, motion seconded by Ms. Leslie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous to adjourn. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for your time.